And welcome to the Orange County School Board's regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February 25th, 2025. Thank you all so much for being with us tonight. I'll do a quick roll call before we get started. Vice Chair Byrd.
Present.
Member Salamanca. Member Douglas.
Present.
Member Salamanca.
Present.
Thank you. Member Gallo.
Good evening.
Member Vanos.
Present.
Member Felder.
Present.
And Member Ferrant. Is Member Ferrant with us online?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for attending. As a reminder, board members will not be engaging in outside electronic or digital communication during the meeting so that we can focus our full attention on the matters before us. To my fellow board members, district staff, and members of the public when speaking, please make sure your microphone is turned on and speak directly into it so our YouTube and Orange TV viewers can hear you clearly. Again, thank you for participating. We are going to begin in just a minute with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. But before doing so, I do want to mention two very sad announcements. We were saddened to learn recently of the passing of Senator Geraldine Thompson on February 13th, followed by the loss of Bobby Beagles three days later. As we stand and we bow our heads for a moment of silence, please join us in keeping their families in your thoughts and prayers. And now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I mentioned, Senator Geraldine Thompson was a lioness of the local black community. A former OCPS teacher, she was a lifetime educator and historian. She not only founded a museum here in Paramore, she ensured that students learned living history from their forebears. I had the joy and the pleasure and the privilege of knowing her personally in all my time in office, and I can't tell you what an impactful woman she was. And a woman who never, never took no for an answer. We have lost a giant, and she leaves a huge void in our community. And it's up to each and every one of us to be part of filling that void. With that, let me call on Member Felder to read a resolution on behalf of the school board.
Thank you, Chair Jacobs. Just before I read the resolution, I too would like to share some personal reflections about Senator Geraldine Thompson. I remember years and years ago, Senator Thompson is not from Orlando, but she found herself concerned about the history of blacks who lived in Orlando. So she would come to my house and sit with my mother for hours to talk about some of the accomplishments of black people. And she penned it in a book. She saw the need to take Dr. Wells, who was a former physician in Orlando on South Street, to take his house and to change it into some type of museum because they owned the Quarterback Club. And I remember when I was eight years old, my mom and dad took me to the Quarterback Club. And I had my first martini. I don't drink because of that, because I can't get the taste of that hard whatever. I can't drink that. But I'm so grateful for Senator Thompson because she got all this information together and she saw the need to have a museum about black Orlandans here and not even being from here. And she worked at Valencia after she left OCPS and started the first black advisory board at Valencia. She said they needed to have, for community awareness, they needed to have a black advisory board. She was really, as you said, Chair Jacobs, she was a trailblazer in a real way. And I'm just so, you know, in awe of the fact a person is not even from Orlando and saw the need to talk about some of the accomplishments of black people. And she was my personal friend in a lot of ways. So I'm just so, I'm saddened, but she, you know, one of the representatives of the state said, well, how are you all going to replace Geraldine? And she said, not one person can do it. There'll be many people to have to do the job that Senator Thompson has done during her state as a state representative and senator. So with that being said, let me share our resolution to honor Geraldine, Senator Geraldine Thompson. Whereas Senator Geraldine Thompson was a dedicated public servant who represented Western Orange County in both the Florida House and Senate, beginning in 2006. And whereas Geraldine Thompson was born in New Orleans, Louisiana, and moved to Florida in 1955. And whereas she worked as a teacher for Orange County Public Schools for six years before becoming an administrator at Valencia Community College for 24 years. And whereas she founded the Wells-Built Museum of African-American History and Culture, preserving important stories and memorabilia of the Civil Rights Movement and African art. And whereas Thompson wrote the Orlando Book in the Black American series recounting 150 years of black history in the city. And whereas she was a strong advocate for education and a devoted wife, mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother, whose wisdom and compassion shaped lives in the community and across the state. And whereas, Orange County Public Schools and the entire central Florida community mourn the loss of Senator Geraldine Thompson, who passed away on Thursday, February 13, 2025. Now, therefore, the School Board of Orange County, Florida does hereby acknowledge and declare that Geraldine Thompson will be remembered as a beacon for education and civil rights, and her contributions have and will continue to help our students and the community in the future. Adopted by the School Board of Orange County, Florida, in Orlando, Florida, on this 25th day of February 2025, our Chair Teresa Jacobs, School Board of Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Felder. Thank you for those heartfelt words. I know we all mourn her loss, and as I said, we also pray for her family and her close friends and for our whole community. Of course, Member Douglas, you're recognized.
Yes. I just would like to say, at the beginning of my campaign, I received a phone call from Geraldine Thompson telling me that she supported me. And she also gave me some advice to whom I should be reaching to, to be able to get a little bit more campaign funds. And then she really assured me that she will be by my side if I needed to. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think you can still count on her to be by your side.
Yes, thank you.
All right. And I would like to share a little bit about Bobby Beagles, and I'm sure some of my fellow board members will as well. Bobby is just, this was just this amazing, amazing man who worked with OCPS to promote agricultural education for four decades. He was integral in the creation of our Special Hearts Farm and the Falcon Friends Farm. His family couldn't join us here tonight because they are mourning and celebrating his life as we speak. For those of us who had not opportunity to work with Bobby, I was talking to his wife this morning, and Bobby was like one of those people just bigger than life, you know, so full of energy. And in addition to the energy, he was so full of spunk. I just can't find another way to describe Bobby other than spunk. And like Senator Thompson, Bobby did not take no for an answer. I couldn't help but reflect on the fact that while God called him home, I'm not sure that heaven knows what they got themselves into, because Bobby is one of those people who takes charge, and he's just an incredible spirit, and he will be missed by me and so many other people. So let me read this resolution in honor of Bobby Beagles. Whereas Bobby Beagles was born April 6, 1942, in Sampson, Alabama, and raised in Florida. And whereas he developed a love of agriculture early in life and raised cattle on a ranch in Christmas, Florida, with his family, including Vicki, his wife of 57 years. Whereas Bobby has been a strong advocate and partner with Orange County Public Schools for more than 40 years, significantly contributing to the success of Future Farmers of America and 4-H programs at both the county and state levels. Whereas he served as the Executive Director of the Orange County Farm Bureau, demonstrating exceptional leadership and commitment to the agricultural community. And whereas Bobby was inducted into the Florida 4-H Hall of Fame in 2019 for his contributions dating back to 1983. And whereas he routinely lobbied on behalf of Orange County Public Schools students and agricultural programs at the state level, and was instrumental in the establishment and success of Special Hearts Farm, ensuring students of varying abilities have access to valuable agricultural education. And whereas Bobby has generously donated time, resources, and expertise to judge contests, secure donations, and sponsorships for student livestock auctions and mentor agricultural students. And whereas the Falcon Friends Farm at East River High School would not exist without Bobby and his wife securing funding and providing hands-on support to bring the project to life. And whereas Orange County Public Schools and the entire central Florida community mourn the loss of Bobby Beagles, who passed away on Sunday, February 16, 2025. Now, therefore, the School Board of Orange County does hereby acknowledge and declare that Bobby Beagles will always be remembered as a much-loved champion of agricultural education, and his contributions have left an impact that will benefit students for generations to come. Adopted by the School Board of Orange County, Florida, in Orlando, Florida, on this 25th day of February 2025. Let me call on Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today was a hard day. Bobby was a good man. And you could see a picture of his sweet wife Vicki up on the screen now, because Bobby didn't do anything alone. In every endeavor he took, every time he reached out and he helped a school within OCPS, Vicki was involved as well. Whether she was a willing partner or not, she was involved. I was fortunate enough to work, I actually met Bobby before I got into office, when I was campaigning in 2018. And we live, he lives just not far from where I live, out in East Orange. He had a small cattle ranch out in Christmas. And he was just a great man. He often reminded me so much of my dad, just because he liked to hunt, he liked to fish, he loved the outdoors. He just loved old Florida. And every time I called to talk to him, and I'd get Vicki, Vicki'd be like, he's out, just recently, he's out mending the fences, Angie, he's out mending the fences. Can't have the cattle get away. He's out mending the fences. When we built Falcon and Friends Farm, which is at East River High School, we were trying for several years to get money from the legislators allocated to us so that we could build the barn, and that never came to fruition. So Bobby went to the Farm Bureau with who he was, the Executive Director at the time, and he convinced them to give us $75,000 to build this barn if the then Superintendent Jenkins would agree to match it, which she did. And what that farm does is exposes our students with unique abilities to animals, to harvesting, to growing, to planting. And there's another one, Special Hearts Farm, that we actually emulated, because Special Heart Farm came first. I can't say enough good things about this man. In fact, one of the pictures, you see that we're cutting the ribbon to the barn, and Bobby's looking at me, because he's going, girl, what's your problem? Why can't you cut the ribbon? Because my scissors wouldn't cut. He was just a good man who did an awful lot of good things for OCPS, who supported ag like nobody's business. I would call a principal, and we would be short of ag teacher. Ag teachers are short to come by. So if anybody out there wishes to be an ag teacher, let us know, because we're always looking for good ag teachers. But I'd call and I'd say, oh, you guys don't have an ag teacher. You know, when Bobby finds out, Bobby's not going to be happy about that. And they'll be like, don't tell Bobby. Give me a minute. Let me call Danny. Let me call Danny. Let me find an ag teacher. And we always did. And it's in large part because of Bobby and Danny and the great CTE team that we have. So much agriculture in our schools and so much FFAs, they were really important to Bobby, and he did everything he could to support it. He will be forever profoundly missed. It was a shock to all of us when we found out on Monday that he had passed away. He was so vibrant and so strong. Everybody that I've talked to is like, not Bobby. My husband included him. When I told him, he's like, not Bobby. And I said, I know Bobby. So he will be missed. We know he's up in heaven, and he's guiding the cattle up there, and he's taking control of things. So I just want to say how much I will miss him and how much I appreciate him and Vicki for everything they've done for OCPS. I do want to take a moment of privilege to read something from Member Pam Gould. She was on the board prior, and her and Bobby were extremely close. They worked together to build the Special Hearts Farm. And this is what she has to say. "It was my absolute honor to have Bobby Beagles as an advisor and partner in service during my tenure on the school board. Bobby Beagles was a standard bearer of service. He let nothing stand in his way when it came to serving children, community, and advancing the agricultural industry. It is because of Bobby invited me to walk the Special Hearts Farm model at Dr. Phillips High that we were able to expand that program and the opportunity for lifelong farming jobs for our ESE students. Thank you to the school board for honoring this great man today." And I also want to note that they showed one of the pictures of the Special Hearts Farm. We actually gave that picture with all the students and staff signing it and presented it to Bobby. And at the viewing today at the memorial, they had that picture up with the flowers to showcase all of his good work on behalf of every student with unique abilities, because that's the man that he is, and that's the man that he showed every single one of us every day, that he was. And I hope one day I could be as great as he is. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Vice Chair Byrd.
Thank you. I'm just going to echo what Member Gallo said. This is such a profound loss for our community. And I was thinking about, I've been thinking about him a lot this week, but I was thinking about how, one of the first times I met him was when I was also running back in 2018. And we just, you know, you just love the man. He's so passionate about what he believed in. And I will never forget, every time we were at an event, usually like maybe a fundraising event for Special Hearts Farm, or at the Farm Bureau, or whenever he spoke about Special Hearts Farm. And if you all are not familiar with Special Hearts Farm and what they do, you really should find out, because it is a magical, magical place, and it's one of my favorite places to go visit in District 7. Every time he speaks or spoke about Special Hearts Farm, he would tear up and start crying. The strong cattle man would start crying. He loved those kids. He loved the work that was being done there, and none of it would have happened without his support. And the same thing with our farm over at East River. He was passionate about giving our students with unique abilities a place to go every day to feel purpose, to have a job to do, to continue the love of animals and farming. So, you know, there's not much more to say. He was such a phenomenal person. And I'm really struck at how we have lost three just industry pillars to our community in recent months, including Harris Rosen, and Geraldine, and now Bobby. These people spent their lives dedicated to their community and making their community a better place. And they are all three tremendous examples to all of us to hopefully do the same thing and to never stop fighting for our community. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Member Felder.
Thank you, Chair. They say it happens in threes, so I don't know. When I decided to run in 2020, I don't know how you got my number, Bobby Beagles called me and said to me, you need to meet with me. I said, okay, who are you? He said, I'm Bobby Beagles. And I'm, we gonna meet at this catfish place in the park. I said, oh, God. And so, he said, somebody else want to meet with me too, but I need to meet with you. And so, the meeting was supposed to be like 20 or 30 minutes, but I'm telling you, the meeting lasted two hours. And let me tell you, we talked about everything under the sun. And what he was to me, this woman running, who was gonna, at that time, be the only black person on the board, because Cat Gordon was the only one, and then Katie Adams was the only one. And he shared some nuggets with me that gave me strength and to let me understand and know. And he said, listen, I'm gonna show you how to navigate through this. Listen, I told his wife today, I appreciated him so much in the things he shared with me, and how you do what you need to do, and how you get things done. And the fact that he said, listen, I'm a farmer, he said, and I didn't have that much appreciation, because I thought Alex Smith was crazy, Dr. Phillips with all these cows and chickens and everything. And then I met Bobby Beagles, and he and Alex were friends. I said, oh, this is where Alex gets all this from. So I began to have a real appreciation for animals and the farm. And then when I saw one of my students, a couple of my students from Edgewater, who were now at Special Hearts Farm, and they saw me, and they began to talk to me, and I saw what it did to them and how this Special Hearts Farm is something else. And that was his heart. And as Board Member Byrd said, if you have never visited the one at Maxi Elementary in out east, you should go and see how our children function and what they do, what these animals do for them. So I'm so grateful for Bobby Beagles, because he shared some things with me, and he said, if you ever need me, I'm a phone call away, just call me. And I was surprised, he knew more about me than I knew about myself in terms of running for this office, this seat. So he will be sorely, sorely missed. And I don't know, like they said about replacing Geraldine, I don't know who would love agriculture and for agriculture to be in the schools like Bobby did. I pray that God will send us somebody that will be as dedicated and that will love what we do in our schools and our children. And he is going to be, again, sorely missed. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Member Felder. Well, he was also strategic, because I first met him when I was running for office. So I thought I was special, but now I see. Yes, a trend. Absolutely. Let me recognize Dr. Vasquez, our superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo the same sentiments from the various board members. We truly have lost two champions in our community who fought hard for our children and who were always willing to lend a hand in whatever way possible. And I know our hearts are heavy as we mourn both Geraldine and Bobby. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Vasquez, regarding the agenda, are there any changes to the agendas published?
No, Madam Chair, there are no changes.
All right. With there being no changes, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Motion by Vice Chair, is there a second? Second by Member Salamanca. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, Member Ferrant. Are you with us?
Yes, aye.
Okay, and you're in favor of the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. All right. We have some very special recognitions to share with you this evening before our border of business begins. So first, I'd like to invite Vice Chair Byrd to tell us about an honoree whose planned recognition in October was derailed by Hurricane Milton.
Yes. Thank you, Chair. So when I was asked to think of some community members that are making differences in our schools, I thought, why not look at parents who are still involved in our school, even though their kids have graduated? That's pretty unique, right? We have quite a few of them that remain dedicated, and I want to share one with you, the first one tonight with you. I'm honored to acknowledge a Coe High School volunteer, Moses Lugo, who has remained a big part of Night Nation even after his son graduated three years ago. Moses, can you please stand up? He is so vital to Coe High School. He has secured several banner sponsorships for Coe High School's baseball team and dedicates his time to student athletes at football games and cross-country meets, even when he has to be there at 5:30 a.m. His support goes even further. He manages multiple social media fan pages for the school's athletic teams as well. Moses' dedication to Coe High is truly inspiring. We are deeply grateful for his contributions. He truly loves Coe, and we truly love him. Thank you for everything that you do for Coe. And we'd love to have you come up for a picture. Okay, so to continue, I've got our PTSA member Sharon Sider. She has also continued to support Coe High School after the graduation of her children. Sharon, can you please stand so we can recognize you? In the past, she has coordinated so that more than 100 students, PTSA volunteers, and Coe High School staff can attend rally and tally, rally to tally each year. This is a three-day field trip to the state capitol to experience Florida government at work during the legislative session in January. This provides our students with invaluable leadership and educational opportunities. I've gotten to work with Sharon, who, actually, we just met face-to-face tonight, but we've been email buddies for years, who has requested school board funds to help secure the bus transportation for this event so the kids can go up there. So I've been super excited to be able to help her with that. Sharon, we really thank you for your commitment to Coe High School and to the students and to making and to making this opportunity become available to them. Because as I told you earlier, this is life-changing. Some of these kids are going to be our future leaders because of these trips, so thank you for that. Why don't you come up for a picture as well? Okay, I'm almost done, I promise. You know how it is once I get started bragging. Okay, so, we're gonna move to Apopka High School now because I have to tell you about these two incredible volunteers that we have at Apopka High School. I am delighted to recognize the Apopka High School Marching Band Volunteers, Joe Chandler and Carl Rita. Can you both stand for us? And look, they're even donning their Apopka High shirts. I love it. For countless years, these two gentlemen have developed logistics so that the Blue Darter Band can move in style. And I thought we have a pic, there it is. That is Big Blue, the band semi, which was crafted with these gentlemen's expertise and guidance to transport more than 200 students to events. Carl and Joe have also secured the community sponsors to fund the cab to transport the semis' trailers. At the University of Florida's Annual Gator Band Day, both men spend nearly 24 hours with the marching band. They help provide what can be a life-changing experience for those students. They truly represent the spirit of community and teamwork, and I'm so grateful for their support as I know that our band director, who's down there, Mr. Langford, and Principal Heinz do as well. So, Carl and Joe, come on up for a picture.
Thank you to each of you for making such a difference in District 7. Next, we would like to recognize a real-life superhero. Vice Chair, it is your night. Go ahead, can you tell us a little more?
It is District 7's night, apparently. It is my pleasure to share this with everyone. I'd like to recognize Wolf Lake Middle School, sorry, 6th grade Dean Julius Franklin, who is a real-life superhero. Dean Franklin, please rise. So, last month, 7th grade student Daniel Cabara was choking on a water bottle cap in his classroom. He went into the bathroom and tried to cough out the bottle cap. Dean Franklin heard the frantic call on the radio and quickly jumped into action. He successfully dislodged the bottle cap that was stuck in Daniel's throat by administering the Heimlich maneuver. Thankfully, Daniel is feeling much better. And I think, is he with us tonight? No, he couldn't make it, but he's feeling much better. We are so incredibly thankful for you and your heroism. Real-life hero, thank you so much, Dean.
Thank you.
Would you like to come up? And we have Principal Hop there as well.
Dean Franklin, thank you so much. You know, I just put a plug in while we're waiting for Vice Chair to come back. For those of you who haven't taken the CPR class and gotten certified and learned the Heimlich maneuver, this is one way we can all be a hero when we're in the right place at the right time, but only if we have the right skills. Thank you so much for investing your time in being prepared to save lives, as you did in this case. It's gotta be rewarding, and we need a lot of people like you. Everybody that touches children should be certified, every single person, so thank you. Back to you. Oh, okay, so each month, I said, it's Vice Chair Bird's not month, a day. Each month, a school board member honors an employee in their district. These employees have shown exceptional dedication and contributed to the success of our students. We're grateful for every single one of our devoted staff members, and this is just one more way that we're pleased to honor them. Vice Chair.
Yes, okay, I promise this will be my last one for District 7 tonight. But this one, I am so excited about. We are going to recognize tonight a Coey High School music teacher, Bernard Hendrix. And we are, there he is, right there. And we are recognizing him because he was one of 25 semifinalists, along with Freedom High School music teacher, Michael Antman, for the 2025 Grammy Music Educator Award. But, it gets even better because as you can see, he was one of the 10, he was chosen for one of the 10 finalists for the award from across the country. There he is! So, super excited for him. Presented annually, the Recording Academy and the Grammy Museum from them. The award honors educators who have made a significant and lasting contribution to music education and demonstrate a deep commitment to top-notch music education in schools. Both of Hendrix's parents were musicians, and he has fond memories of listening to his jazz records when he was a child. After Bernie earned his Bachelor's of Arts in Music Education from FAMU in 1997, I knew that one was gonna get a cheer, he began his teaching career and helped grow the music program from 120 to 400 students at Robins Wood Middle School. Now, there's something pretty significant here because the principal there at the time was our very own Dr. Bridget Williams, who is now our Deputy Superintendent for Executive Services. But, but, my script here says that in 2005, Hendrix was stolen, stolen away by another principal. Dr. Michael Armbruster, who was at the time opening a Coey High School. And he stole Bernie. And she's still bitter about it. She is, she is, she is.
So, from one deputy superintendent to another deputy superintendent? Okay, there's gotta be something about you.
Now, you know why we're on opposite sides of the dais.
See, Bernie, it's all because of you. It's all because of you. At a Coey, Hendrix builds the music program, he built the music program from the ground up. He's also, by the way, the president-elect of the Florida Music Education Association this coming year, so we're proud of him about that. Even though Mr. Hendrix wasn't chosen for this year's Grammy, he is a winner in our eyes for the way he inspires the musicians of tomorrow. And even though he didn't win an official Grammy, I have a little Grammy for you.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
Bridget, go down, take a picture.
Oh, come on, loser.
Too much love, girl, honestly.
Yeah.
I've got some suggestions.
Too much.
All right, look here.
Oh, my God. I know, right? Yeah. All right. Now, I would like to invite somebody else to brag about their district. I would like to invite Member Stephanie Vanos, who represents District 6, to tell us about the retired OCPS staff member she has selected for her school board spotlight.
Thank you, Chair Jacobs. I'd like to honor retired Captain Ron Beasley, who was inducted into the Florida Veterans Hall of Fame for his lifetime contribution to society and the state of Florida earlier this month. Captain Beasley, can you please stand so we can recognize you? I'm gonna brag about you for a little bit. Captain Beasley retired from the Navy in 2000 after serving 23 years in the military. He coordinated with former District 5 board member, Cat Gordon, to start the first junior ROTC program at Meadowwoods Middle in 2004. Captain Beasley also taught our junior ROTC students at Evans High for 13 years before retiring in 2016. He provided students with an opportunity to meet former U.S. Representative Val Demings at the Capitol and visit Washington, D.C. in March of 2015. Captain Beasley also has helped to ensure junior ROTC students continue to excel after high school. So, I wanna give an example. He helped Evans High alum Ricky Singh earn his acceptance into the U.S. Naval Academy. And Ricky is majoring in nuclear engineering and has a 4.0 GPA. All right, Board Member Felder's disputing which high school he went to. Okay. Captain Beasley, thank you so much for helping our students reach for the stars. Please come forward to have your photo taken with the school board.
All right, and when you come forward, you're gonna have to settle the dispute up here. Which school did you go to? Congratulations, Captain Beasley, and thank you. We are so proud of our junior ROTC programs and our students that participated in it. So, thank you for your role and their success. And now, I'd like to recognize eight seniors from Apopka, Dr. Phillips, Evans, and Jones High School for receiving the Alpha Phi Alpha scholarships during the Martin Luther King Junior Commemorative Luncheon. I'd now like to invite Hankins Johnson Education Foundation President, Lawrence Davis, to the podium to tell us more about why our students were chosen for these wonderful scholarships. Welcome.
Thank you, first of all, for having me here on behalf of the Brothers of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity and Hankins Johnson Education Foundation. We're thrilled that you are recognizing these young people who are outstanding students, and the GPAs range from 3.5s to 4.5s. So, just a tremendous amount of talent we have over here in these young people, and we couldn't be more proud of them. We're just grateful that we could be a small part of helping them to move along and continue their education as they graduate from high school.
All right, if we could get you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you want me to bring up each one up?
I sure do.
Okay, all right, very good. So, we first want to recognize our drum major scholastic achiever, who's Olivia Acosta. Our STEM Wilkerson Scholarship recipient, Nyla Payne. Our other Wilkerson Scholarship Fund STEM Scholarship recipient is Farah Budra. Our MLK Leadership Scholarship recipient, Zara Patterson. Our next Leadership Scholarship recipient, Marvin Monsair. Our Change Agent Scholarship recipient, Jamir Alfonso. Community Service Scholarship recipient, Amir Tahir. Community Service Scholarship recipient, Jacquez Brewer. Be the Best You Can Be Scholarship recipient, Sidney Jackson.
Yes, of course.
Any more of your frat brothers you wanna bring up, sir? Any frat brothers you wanna bring up?
No, just me.
Okay.
Come on up here.
He's a frat brother.
Yeah, bring your frat brothers up.
Oh, he wants you to use his phone to take a picture, yes?
We'll do both, good. Big smile, big smile again, hold on. Happy? Perfect.
You got one in the back or two?
Is there anyone else's parents?
Any parents?
Okay, come on.
Principals? Principals, parents, come on, come on. Come on, guys.
Good, big smile, big smile again. This is how I get.
Come on, everybody, come on.
Grab a child.
Come on, come on, make it work, come on, come on. You gotta be bold here. Just search yourself.
You can't see her, the little one.
No, 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 no. We're gonna, make sure we can see her, please.
Look forward to me, don't look at my group. Good, stay there, hold on. Big smile.
One more. That's it? All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Eleanor. Congratulations. So great, congratulations. So proud of you guys. Congratulations.
What great kids. Thank you so much for honoring our students. Okay. Student, student, sorry, seniors. We look forward to seeing what amazing things you accomplish in the future. And we are so appreciative to the foundation and the President Lawrence Davis for honoring our students. All right, next, we are going to move on to another recognition. Our very own Superintendent, Dr. Maria Vazquez, was presented with the 2025 MLK Drum Major Award for Civic Affairs. This award has been, you can clap. This award was presented for nearly 40 years. Kind of sounds like a long time, doesn't it? Yeah, it is a long time. For nearly 40 years, to a local person that is making a difference in central Florida. What a special honor. Several of our board members and cabinet leaders were there to join Dr. Vazquez. Dr. Vazquez, do you want to share anything with us about the event?
I was incredibly humbled to have even been nominated. So, I'm very thankful to the organization, but more importantly, for all that you're doing for our students. The, the scholarships are phenomenal, but the mentoring, those relationships that you're building, it's, it's so critical to their success. And so, thank you so much for the recognition. I know that there are so many that are deserving of that.
Thank you, Dr. Vazquez. Yeah. Come on.
One more picture. Come on, let's get close.
All right, before, before we move over recognitions, let me check with the superintendent to see if we have any newly appointed administrators, administrators to recognize.
No, Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay, okay, so those of you who are here for recognitions and celebrations, you're welcome to stay with us the rest of the night, but this is also your opportunity to sneak out before we begin the business portion of the meeting. All right, this portion of the meeting, we set aside so that we can hear council reports and reports from our, both our CTA, our Classroom Teacher Association, OESPA, and OCASA. So, at this point, let me call on President Ron Pollard of the Orange County Education Support Professionals Association. Mr. Pollard. Always wonderful to have you with us.
Actually, I really didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I do want to tell you, I was pleased to see Board Member Sal Monica and Dr. Vasquez at the Love the Bus in Lake Nona compound today. It was really nice for our transportation people to see that you all care enough to just step in and say hi. I saw some smiling faces, so really, that's mainly it. I didn't have any comments to make.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pollard. Just want to check in, Mr. McCracken, don't want to put you on the spot. Do you have anything you want to offer? How about Dr. Anna Diaz? Is she, there you are. Dr. Anna Diaz is the Executive Director of the Orange County Association of School Administrators. Wonderful to see, I'm gonna work on this, it takes a second, but be patient. Oh, come on. You know, I'm not sure if I really have a pulse sometimes.
That's perfect. It's wonderful to be here with you, especially after all that energy you feel with recognition. So, good evening, Chair Jacobs, Board Members, Superintendent Vasquez, Deputy Superintendent Armbrister, Staff and Community Members. I'm Dr. Anna Diaz, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Orange County Association of School Administrators. I come before you not only as OCASA's Executive Director, but as someone who has lived and understands school choice in OCPS. For over 30 years, I served this community as a parent, a teacher, school-based administrator, and a district leader. I have firsthand knowledge of the power of choice in shaping opportunities for students. In the 90s, now that's the 20th century, I was part of the parent-led effort for the public charter conversion of then the Wendy Ridge Elementary School to a K-8. While it was not approved, the movement inspired the expansion of school choice across Orange County public schools. I helped also develop dual-language programs at the elementary level when I was principal of what is today Roberto Clemente Middle School. Later, as principal of University High School, I was part of a team that founded the IB program despite doubts that we would ever succeed. These experiences taught me something very important. Bold ideas, when combined with collaboration and thoughtful policy, can transform education and expand opportunity. That is why OCASA is eager to continue the conversation you're having on policy JCA, assignment of students to schools. We're fortunate to have a superintendent who understands choice. Having served as the principal of Wendy Ridge K-8, her experience and her expertise in this space is invaluable and will work to refine and strengthen your approach. Your recent work session on policy JCA underscored the importance of expanding and refining school choice policies to meet the needs of students and families. Some of the priorities that emerged included ensuring schools remain diverse, expanding access to transportation solutions, streamlining enrollment, enhancing marketing efforts, and ensuring family stability by keeping siblings together. While these discussions bring new opportunities, we must also be mindful of policy changes that could impact school culture and expectations by maintaining clear expectations for attendance, behavior, and academic success to uphold strong learning environments and preserving principals' ability to rotate transfers when necessary, while ensuring policy language is clear, consistently, and fairly applied across all schools. This is an exciting time, and we want you to know that you can count on OCASA to participate in this conversation. Thank you.
All right, we are on to celebrations observations. For those of you who are not aware, all proclamations were adopted by the Board on August 27th of 2024, Board Meeting and celebrations and observ, I'm sorry, the 20, August 27th, 2024 Board Meeting. The list will remain on the agenda for the entire school year. Next up is our strategic plan update. Is that correct? No, we do not have, we do. I don't know, this looks rather ominous. You marching up with that big old suitcase, followed by... All right, I don't know if that was you or me, but we're getting there. Dr. Border, you're recognized.
All right, good evening, Chair Jacobs, Members of the Board, Superintendent Vasquez. Excited to be here tonight and appreciate the opportunity to share information about a new tool that is currently available for our district and school leaders. Incredible team of individuals led by Dr. Jennifer Sasser, Ben Allen, Heather Kreider, Deborah Izzo, and several others, worked, thanks to some partnerships with IT and Superintendent, were able to work within our system and develop an interactive accountability denominator report aimed at saving the valuable resource of time for our administrators and teachers. So, to hear more about that tonight, I'm gonna turn it over to Ben Allen.
Thank you, Dr. Border, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening. This evening, I'll be presenting on an exciting product that the Research, Measurement, and Strategy Office has put together. There we go.
Is that better?
Thank you.
We want to be able to hear you. Okay, now we should be able to hear you.
All right, is that better for the volume?
Yes. I didn't do that. I did not do that.
Now, this is turning into a game. All right. So, the Research, Measurement, and Strategy Office has put together a tool for our school and district leaders, as Dr. Border mentioned. Before describing that product, I briefly want to reintroduce you to the office and how our teams function and work together. Our office is composed of four different teams: Assessment, Accountability, Research, and Strategic Improvement. These groups all help develop the information that we provide. The Assessment Department manages the administration of international, national, state, and district assessments. Sound practices around assessment development and administration give us valid and reliable information. This department also works with school staff to promote data and assessment literacy. The Accountability Department processes student data, including assessment data, to meet various reporting needs. These departments, Department reports are the starting place for conversations about progress monitoring within state and federal accountability frameworks. The Research Department shares data with external researchers, conducts internal analyses, and evaluates programs. This longer view helps contextualize our outcomes within larger educational trends across time. And the Strategic Improvement Team supports school improvement planning and helps principals use the team's developed resources. This team creates a strong connection point with school leaders to help them leverage the available information. Research, Measurement, and Strategy has identified two focus areas to support the district's vision and mission. Our efforts around building capacity include learning new information, developing skills, and applying resources to improve professional practice. To inform action, we seek to provide district and school leaders with the guidance and insight they need as they consider options and make decisions. I'm proud and fortunate to be able to work with this team of people who are all committed to innovating on behalf of the district's students and staff. You'll see in the next several slides how our approach to building capacity and informing action has come to life. One of the key functions of our office is to provide schools with information about student progress within state and federal accountability frameworks. This is something that our Accountability Department has done for many years. Our approach, approach to providing this information, though, has had some drawbacks. First, school staff need to sort through and assemble data points from multiple files to understand which students need support throughout the year. Second, finding insights from our current Excel reports takes time and expertise. Third, time spent collecting and organizing data does not return value until it informs conversations around student success. In short, for leaders to take action based on our data, they had to invest substantial time to process their data reports, and they had to repeat this work each time a new report came out. Here's an example of the accountability report we have historically provided to schools. Each school would receive a spreadsheet like the one shown about, about several times a year. The file contains anywhere between 85 and 150 columns of data that staff would have to scroll through and filter to get what they were looking for. Many schools would also take this report and add additional columns, such as schedule information. District staff also use these files, and they can be quite long. The typical length is around 200,000 rows for a district file, and the amount of data can cause the report to load and run slowly. To help address the problems we saw, a cross-departmental team from the Research, Measurement, and Strategy Office developed a new approach for schools to access the data in their accountability denominator report. We created a data structure that powers this report through Microsoft's Power Platform and created interactive visualizations using Power BI. The district ITS team provided access to these robust tools, and we worked with a small group of school and district leaders to test different approaches and gather feedback along the way. All of this has led to a tool that helps bring data to life and lets principals find hidden insight into what they might not have otherwise seen. The report is currently accessible to the following groups, including members of the superintendent's cabinet, staff in the chief academic office as identified by the CAO, staff in the Research, Measurement, and Strategy Office, executive leaders, principal leaders, cadre senior administrators, principals and assistant principals, and the last two can only see the data relative to their schools, whereas all of the others are district-level. Charter school principals are also able to see this report, and, and their data is included in the information. The report is organized like a funnel that starts with the overview data and moves to specific student information. This allows leaders to look for trends and then follow up with specific groups of students or even individual students. We're using screenshots for the rest of these demonstrations because the report contains identifiable student information that we cannot share publicly. We've redacted any student identifying information throughout the presentation. The first page of the report provides information that people can use to make sense of the report. It shows a general timeline for when information is updated, and in the upper-right corner, it shows the date when the current information was reported. In the case that we're looking at tonight, the report we are looking at was updated on December 19th, 2024. We also have a space for staff to provide feedback. This will let us know what features are most helpful and what we should consider for future development. We have committed to making only minor adjustments to this product for the remainder of the 24-25 school year so that the tool won't change mid-year as people are learning how to use it. This is the overview page of the report. It provides a graphic display of outcomes from the four state-assessed subject areas: English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Studies. The report shows charts for the various assessments that students take throughout the year. At the top, users can quickly see the number of students included in the dataset and how many students are included in each of the school-grade accountability components. District users can click at the top of the screen to select specific cadres. They can also click in the school dropdown to select one or more schools. On the left side of the report, staff can select a student filter menu. This will open a panel on the left side of the screen. In this panel, the report can be filtered through several areas of interest. Filtering by teacher gives school leaders new functionality. They can select specific teachers or groups of teachers to see just results for those teachers. They can also filter by course code if they want to see how students enrolled in specific courses are progressing. Under the student filter section, there are many options for narrowing the scope of the report. Users can select by the Every Student Succeeds Act or ESSA subgroup, which is important for federal accountability outcomes. Report users can also filter for students enrolled in courses with state end-of-course assessments or by students who have already met graduation assessment requirements for Grade 10 English Language Arts and Algebra I. This means that a student who has scored a Level 3 or higher on the FAST Grade 10 ELA Assessment or Algebra I End-of-Course Assessment or that they have earned a concordant or comparative score as defined by the state. The report can also be filtered by specific student groups of interest. These groups help schools identify students who might fall under specific sets of accountability rules based on their enrollment and demographic information. Two groups that our teams frequently receive questions about are English Language learners with a date of entry into a U.S. school within the last two years and students who are tied back from alternative education sites or ESE centers. ELLs with less than two years who are not included, are not included in some accountability components, and students who are tied back are included in a school grade, even though they may not attend the school. The filter panel also includes toggle boxes to select students who meet the inclusion rules for specific school-grade accountability components under the state accountability model. Closing the student filter panel returns us to the overview page. One helpful feature of this report is that the graphs include tooltips. This allows users to hover over specific bars of interest to receive more information. In this case, I'm hovering over the purple Level 5 bar for Grade 3 ELA achievement on the Florida Assessment of Student Thinking Progress Monitoring II Assessment. This tells me that there are 1,307 students or approximately 8.5% of the assessed students who performed at this level. I can click on that same bar, and the rest of the report will filter down to just those students. After clicking on this bar, the rest of the page has recalculated to only include that. After clicking on this bar, the rest of the page has recalculated to only include that One of the most powerful features of Power BI is the ability to drill into more detail. Taking the group of students that I already selected, those Grade 3 students who scored at a Level 5 on their FAST PM2 assessments, I can right-click on the total number of students and select the Drill Through to see the student list. This brings up a new page with a detailed sheet of student data. Again, parts of this image are redacted because it contains identifiable student information such as their student number, name, and homeroom. In this report, each row represents one student. Report users can use the scroll bar at the bottom of the screen to move across the rows and see additional information. For example, scrolling to the right shows me the scale scores and achievement levels for each of the selected students. I can also see how close students are to meeting their achievement and learning gains targets. This information can help school staff identify groups of students who are demonstrating early indications of achievement or learning gains and would benefit from enrichment, or those who would benefit from specific interventions such as small group instruction, pull-out instruction, tutoring, or targeted content reviews. I could also export this report as an Excel file if I wanted to do any further processing work. This report lets me drill through the data one more time. Just as before, I right-click on a student row and select Drill Through to Individual Student Detail. This brings us to the most granular level of information. The page you see here shows information for one student whose name and teachers have been obscured. From this screen, I can see the accountability components in which the student is currently included. I can also see the student's demographic subgroup information and whether they fall into any areas of special interest from an accountability perspective. In the bottom-left, I see a summary of the assessment outcomes and points to target for ELA and Mathematics. On the right, I can see the student's schedule. The teachers' names have been redacted again to protect anonymity in this meeting, but the users of this report would be able to see all of that information. To get back to the beginning, I click the arrow in the upper-left of the screen. This will take me back one level into the Student List page. And again, I can click the arrow in the upper-left to go to the highest level of the report, which will take me back to the overview page. And we're now back at the overview page, which is the most zoomed-out level of this There are several advantages to building this report within the district. First, we own the data and the products. We do not have to rely on a third party for this report to exist in its current form. Second, we can adapt and customize this report on our own schedule. Third-party vendors frequently have their own schedules for maintaining systems and products, and we don't always have control in those circumstances. Third, we can build multiple products from the same sets of data. Rather than engaging in separate projects to create similar reports, we can use the same infrastructure to create new reports for different audiences. I'll now turn the presentation to Heather Kreider, Principal on Assignment in the Research, Measurement, and Strategy Office, to discuss the training and rollout for district staff and principals.
Our team worked to provide differentiated training to executive leaders, principal leaders, cadre, senior administrators, principals, and assistant principals throughout the months of December and January. During each training session, leaders received a companion guide with links to all resources and communications about the tool. The training provided guided support with learning to navigate the tool and opportunities for school-based scenario exploration to understand the impact of the data visualization. At the end of each training session, we captured reflections and feedback from the attendees. Among the many strong positive responses we have received, this slide contains a sample of themes that are coming out from school and district leaders who have participated in our training. Things like this report will make it easier and more efficient to drill down to specific student supports that are needed, quick, easy access to student groups, and implementing interventions based on current data. This is a game changer. It will expedite the data analysis and allow us to be more responsive to supports and interventions. It is reducing the work I'm doing formatting and sorting the data. And it is not overwhelming because it visually lays everything out. You can drill through to find student data and schedules. Our report was launched for district and school-based users on December 5, 2024. For the most recent 30 days, ending on February 11, we received 735 unique viewers who have opened the report a total of 6,692 times, with a total of over 22,000-page views. This suggests that people are returning to the report multiple times and clicking between pages to drill deeper into the data. I will now turn back over to Ben so that he can finish this up.
For this year, we do not plan to make major changes to the report. If needed, we may make small changes that don't impact the overall layout or function. We are collecting feedback through a link in the report to know what features school and district leaders find most beneficial. Research, Measurement, and Strategy will evaluate those requests and make updates to the report in summer 2025. And we will also continue adding users to this tool, which will happen methodically so we can ensure people are trained at the school and that we have system capacity to maintain the tool. Thank you for allowing us to present this exciting tool. At this time, I'll yield the presentation back to Dr. Vasquez for any comments or discussion.
Thank you, Ben, and the team. This really has been received with great positive feedback. This, of course, board is in response to some of the feedback we've received from Mr. McCracken, Classroom Teachers Association, our advisory councils that with requests for data and trying to help take things off of teachers' plates as it relates to data. I know the team is already working, and I probably shouldn't be saying this, but I started, so I will. The team is already working on enhancing the reports based on feedback that they've received. We're so thankful that you were able to put this together in such a very short period of time, and now we're ready to take any questions or comments from the board.
All right, let me hear first from Member Gallo. Member Gallo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Dr. Boarder's entire team for all the work that went into implementing this, putting it together, gathering all the data, making it look pretty, and then making it look useful. I mentioned on our call, it reminds me a lot of the portal that the Department of Education uses when you can look up school grades and you can really dial in to demographics and really kind of get a sense of where that school or that district is doing well or where they may fall short. What I love about this is that we've been asking Superintendent Vasquez to take stuff off teachers' plate for a very long time. And when she did her roundtables, this is one of the items that kept popping up and popping up, popping up, that teachers were spending a lot of time giving data to administrators when the data was really they could find as well. So I'm super excited about this. I love that our administrators are enjoying it, that they're using it. I hope the usage continues to go up, and I look forward to you coming back to us and tell us how much time we've saved teachers so that they could do the important work of educating our students. So thank you, thank you very much for all this. And I just love that fourth circle moment, I have to point that out. I love that. We asked, we heard, we did, and now we're showing you what we done. So I just wanted to point that out. I love that. Thank you.
Well said, Member Gallo. Member Vanos.
Thank you so much, Sharon. Thank you again for taking the time to do this. I really, I actually was visiting with the principal, and she was one of the pilot schools, and she just shared how much she is really enjoying this program and how much just it is making data analysis so much easier for her. And I'm also glad that we're taking some, you know, giving some time back to teachers, taking this off their plates. You know, I do have to say, I will always say that our students are more than data points, so I just want to make sure that because we have the measuring tool doesn't mean that we're, you know, putting more of a focus on that, we're making sure that we're looking at the whole child and not just the data point. But I will say that, again, the principal I spoke to really, really appreciated it. Did want to ask if guidance counselors will ultimately have access to this information.
Thanks, poor Member Vanna Vanos, for the question. So our plan next is to begin rolling out to teacher groups. We want to do it methodically so that we can make sure as we eventually get to teachers that the system can sustain as we get 14,000 users onto the system and it remains efficient. So next, we are going to look at different teacher groups to begin rolling it out, and we've talked about teacher leaders, guidance counselors, staffing specialists, curriculum resource teachers, literacy coaches, and so we welcome that feedback.
Great, thank you.
Member Salamanca.
Yeah, I just want to echo that. Thank you so much for all that your team has done, and we had such a good conversation. Just appreciating also the before this data platform was done and how difficult it was kind of sorting through this large amount of data. And I think years ago, it wasn't. I think we had different platform as well, and it sounds like we're kind of moving back again into that direction. And I know I'm hearing from administrators that work maybe in this pilot program just how much easier it is for them to like understand some of these numbers without it taking an enormous amount of time. So I really appreciate, this is kind of hopefully the reason why we have a large district. We benefit from scale and volume is to have a team as dedicated as you are with your skillset of being able to build something like this so that it's not happening decentralized at each of the schools in different ways. So thank you for the work on this, and I'm excited to continue getting feedback and seeing how this works out. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Salamanca. Let me check in on Member Ferrante. Member Ferrante, are you with us?
Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you very well. Thank you.
Wonderful. I just wanted to say I am thrilled about this new rollout. I was at a few schools this past week and just talking with administrators and teachers, and they are very, very excited about this new system. I think it's going to really help us narrow in and see how we can really dial in and help individual children. While I totally agree I'm not about, you know, just focusing on, you know, maybe testing and all that kind of things, but I think seeing the data and seeing the gaps, ways that we can really support our kids, I think this is just going to be an incredible tool. And like the others have said, this is really a way to help take some weight off of the teacher shoulders where they're not having to spend so much time digging through all of the data. But our team, wow, exceptional job in what they've been able to create. So I'm really, really thrilled and excited to see this rollout.
Thank you, Member Ferrante. Member Douglas.
I just want to say thank you so much for this, for this tool that you have created. I just do appreciate that it's inside work, and we do not have to rely on a third party. Thank you so much for the brain that you guys have. Thank you. And I appreciate the fact also that you take a load off the teachers, and it's wonderful that you support those teachers in that regard. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Douglas. Well, I think everybody said everything, but everybody hasn't, almost everybody has said it, so I'll say it. Actually, Member Douglas hit the points exactly. I mean, number one, saving our teachers' time so that they can spend their time where it counts. But secondly, besides this being an incredible tool, it's amazing that we have the team in-house that can build this. And I shouldn't be surprised because my interactions with each one of you has always just overwhelmed me with just how talented you are, but this has blown me away, just totally blown me away. So, and you all know how much I love data and digging, and I don't have time for it anymore, which is probably a really good thing, but it's super cool that it's there. So anyway, good job, and I'm sure in the end you saved us, not only saved us money from not having to go to an outside vendor, but it's something that works for us, and we don't have to figure out how to adapt it and how to pay to adapt it. So just good job all the way around. And Superintendent, once again, congratulations. You've done a phenomenal job in putting together a phenomenal team. So, all right, with that, we're going to release you guys and move on to our next item, which is the, oh, I'm sorry, Member Vanos. I didn't see you.
I'm sorry, no, I just chimed in at the last minute. I just have one question. Will parents have access to this data for their student?
No, so, no, they will not, Ms. Vanos. This will, we'll go to the teacher level. That's our plans at this time.
Could a parent request it through like a public records request, or it's just not accessible to them?
I'll, I mean, I'll defer, but I think that if a parent wanted, they have this info, I mean, they have the state information through the progress monitoring system, but teachers will have access to it. And so if a teacher wanted to provide a parent or a school administrator wanted to provide a parent individual student data, you know, that could be possible. But again, we're hoping to take things off of their plates. So this is a formative tool that could be utilized at conferences and things like that when you're thinking of a student coming in for a meeting with a staffing specialist and teachers all giving feedback. This kind of tool could also help facilitate such meetings.
Thank you.
Dr. Vasquez?
I was going to say that parents have access to their child's individual data, whether it's the state assessment, progress monitoring data, or if they are on an intervention program. It's just not all located in one place.
All right, thank you. You're done, yes.
Thanks, Chair. Appreciate it.
This time you're officially done. All right, next is the consent agenda. Mr. Palmarene, do we have any speakers on the consent agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. If there are no questions or comments from board members, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Moved.
Motion by Member Vanos.
Second.
Second by Member Salamanca. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Member Ferrante?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And, just a minute if you would, please. All right, we are on non-consent item 1701, Request Approval of the Recommendation for Renewal of the Charter School Contract with UCP Bales Community Academy Charter for five years. And Mr. Palmarene, let me start with you. Do we have any speakers?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. And Mr. Moody, I will go to you if you could present this to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to introduce our mighty charter team. Dr. Kia Scott, Gina Dole, and Margaret Omo will be presenting 1701 and 1702 this evening. I'll turn it over to Dr. Scott, Senior Director of Charter Schools, School Choice, to present 1701. Kia?
And while you're coming forward, just let me double-check. Do we have any speakers on 1702?
No, Madam Chair.
All right, so we can open both of those at the same time.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Vasquez. I bring to you before you item 1701, the Recommendation for Renewal of the Charter School for UCP Bales Academy. United Civil Policy of Central Florida Inc. Doing Business as UCP Bales Community Academy Charter School opened in August of 2020, following approval of the Orange County School Board. The school is located at 4780 Data Court in Orlando, Florida. UCP Bales Community Academy Charter serves approximately 451 students, kindergarten through grade eight. A renewal site team comprised of School Choice Services staff and district personnel conducted a renewal site visit on January 9, 2025. During the visit, the team interviewed members of the governing board, teachers, parents, and other stakeholders. In addition, documentation of the school's records for the past five years was reviewed regarding critical performance areas, which include educational performance, financial performance, organizational performance, and future planning. Upon conclusion of the renewal process, it was the recommendation of the committee and the Senior Director of School Choice Services that UCP Bales Community Academy Charter be granted a renewal of their charter contract. For further consideration, School Choice Services staff recommends a five-year renewal of the contract to be negotiated between staff and the Charter School Governing Board using the Florida Standard Model Charter renewal contract. Madam Chair?
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members? Member Vanos, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When you did the tour of the charter, were there any deficiencies that you noted?
During the visit, well, prior to and during the visit, there were some issues and concerns with the exceptional student education monitoring, as well as the ESOL, ELL, monitoring that was noted. So I can, if you need any further information on that, I can give it to you.
That would be great.
I can give it to you.
That would be great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Member Vanos?
So with ESC monitoring, we found, it was a couple of information that was noted. And keep in mind that, you know, our small team, we do utilize the OCPS district offices. So ESC has a team that does support charter schools. UCP Bales Academy is its own local education agency. So we do not interact as far as support and monitoring to the extent that we do with the traditional charter schools, but we do keep an eye on them. Some of the things that were noted as far as compliance was that all documents did not have meeting participant signatures in the files. Some meeting notices were required two days, two ways before with 10-day notice that was not completed. And prior written notices needed to have more detail as to why the district was proposing to refuse certain services or provide interventions. The verification of planned distribution should always be signed and there was found that that was not always done in that particular case. Regarding ESOL, UCP Bales does provide services. I don't want you to think that they are not providing services, but because they have adopted to utilize the OCPS ELL plan, some of the monitoring and evaluation pieces were not done within our system, which is called elevation. So that information was missing from that system, which is making it difficult to kind of monitor it. Since we have met with them, they have been in contact with our ESOL contact. There's staffing, there's specialists that supports the school and they are on track to make sure that that is done in the future.
Okay, thank you. You noted that they were an LEA. What does that mean?
Local Education Agency. So charter schools have the opportunity to become their own LEA, which basically gives them the opportunity to have all of their federal funds directly come to them. So whereas FTE passes through the district, which it still does in their case, any grants and federal funds will go directly to the school, which gives them more autonomy.
Thank you for that. Have there been any issues with their finances in the past?
Not at all. Not at all.
Okay, thank you. And then just a question. What would be, is five years the, could we just renew for a year to make sure that they're following up on these services? Or is, you know, how could we do that if we wanted to make sure that our, the students are getting the services that they need?
And I think the last legislative session or the one prior to that, it was noted that statute requires a minimal renewal of five years.
Okay, so even if they have, you know, students are maybe not getting the services that they need, they, the renewal cannot be less than five years according to state statute?
But that doesn't include you from, as a school board, you still have the authority to go in. It doesn't mean, because you're given five years, does it mean that you operate for five years? If any deficiencies come up, you have the right to have us go in and do a deep dive. So I don't want you to think just because you sign, you know, stamp five years that that means it's an automatic.
Okay. And then what would it take, let's just say in a year you went in, like what would it take to actually revoke the renewal?
It would take a lot. Statute really does not, in order to basically close a school, you have to have two, a double F. In this case, the school does not receive a grade that gives a school improvement rating. You would have to have poor financials or be in a financial deteriorating condition, or you have to have severe health and safety conditions in the school. And those would be the means for closure.
Okay, so it's pretty hard to revoke charter status under state statute. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Vanos. Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to first commend Mr. Moody and his staff for all the work that they do. Dr. Scott is in charters and all day long. Like, that's what they do. And I've ran into him at several different charters that I have, I have visited. And we're very fortunate here in Orange County to have such great relationships with our charters. I will tell you, talking to other school districts, even school districts that you think there wouldn't be issues with their charters, there is issues with their charters. So we're very fortunate to have such a great team that does such a wonderful job, not only building those relationships, but ensuring that our charters are operating efficiently and making sure that they're serving the students that they house. So we appreciate you for that. That's really all I have. I think what Member Vanos is referring to with the financials was a couple of years ago, we did have a discussion as a board.
I'm sorry.
Where there was some issues, but it was, I think, related to Medicaid or how they were billing. And so we did have a conversation on that. And I think that time we only renewed them for a year because we were allowed to. They fixed the problems and then we came back and we renewed them for, I believe, five.
We did. Did you want, I wasn't understanding. I was thinking as far as their monthly and annual audit. So if you want me to give more information?
But I support the renewal. Thank you.
Member Vanos, any follow-up on that?
Yeah, sure. If you could just give a quick update, I'd appreciate that. And the reason I ask is because they are their own LEA, so funds, the district doesn't have the same oversight over the funding that they're getting. So, you know, my question what, my question really is, you know, if that's ever been, if there's ever been any issues with that.
So financial, as far as their compliance and them holding their required balance and reserve, no. At the time, it was roughly five years ago, there was an audit, roughly a sampling of roughly 20 students per location. Just looking at the matrices for ESC and it was found that some were inflated and it did result in the school having to pay back some funding.
Thank you.
All right. That can, I'm sorry, you need a vote. Is there a motion to approve the request for, motion to move forward with 1701 by Member Gallo? Is there a second? Second by Vice Chair Bird. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Member Ferrante?
Aye.
I heard an aye. I heard something else. I'm hoping everything's okay out there. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we are on 1702, request approval of the recommendation for the renewal of charter school contract with Renaissance Charter School at Goldenrod for 15 years. Dr. Vasquez?
I'll turn it back over to Mr. Moody to present to the board.
And Dr. Scott will walk us through it.
All right, thank you. Renaissance Charter School Inc. Doing Business as Renaissance Charter School at Goldenrod began operation in July of 2015 as an Orange County Public Charter School following the approval of the Orange County School Board. School is located at 6,004 South Goldenrod Road and it serves approximately 1,089 students in grades K through 8. A renewal site team comprised of School Choice Services staff and district personnel conducted a renewal site visit on January the 17th. During the visit, the team interviewed members of the governing board, teachers, parents, and other stakeholders. In addition, documentation of the school's records for the past five years was reviewed regarding critical performance areas, which include educational performance, financial performance, organizational performance, and future planning. Upon conclusion of the renewal process, it was the recommendation of the committee and the Senior Director of School Choice Services that Renaissance Charter School at Goldenrod be granted a renewal of their charter school contract. For further consideration, the School Choice Services staff recommends a 15-year renewal of the contract to be negotiated between staff and the charter school governing board using the Standard Model Charter renewal contract developed by the Florida Department of Education. Madam Chair?
Thank you. Any members of the board have any questions? All right, no questions. I'll entertain a motion to move forward or not with 1702.
So moved.
Motion to move forward. Motion by Member Salamanca. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Member Felder. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Member Ferrante? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we are on item 1703, request approval of Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company to provide third-party medical administrative services for the district. Mr. Palmarene, do we have anyone who's come to speak to the board on 1703?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have three speakers.
Okay. All right, let's, for those of you who wish to speak, I'm sorry.
Can I just go on record as voting in affirmative for the last action?
I'm, did you walk out?
I did.
I am so sorry. Yes.
That I voted in affirmative.
Thank you very much. I didn't even realize you weren't there. Thank you for clarifying that. Oh, well, that didn't sound good. We missed you dearly, though. Things nearly fell apart. Okay, for those of you who are going to speak, the comments that I made before, I don't even think I need to repeat with this group. But each of you has three minutes. And do you have an order for me?
Yes, Madam Chair. First speaker is Philip Barbaro and then Kimberly Funderburke and Beth Smith.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Superintendent Vasquez. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Phil Barbaro. I'm the President of United Healthcare's Public Sector and Labor Business. I am here today to address a crucial decision before the board regarding the selection of your future healthcare plan partner. The decision will significantly impact your employees, their families, and the students in this district. I urge the board to reconsider the recommendation that has been presented and examine the following. The district's health plan is currently facing a deficit of approximately $65 million, which begs the question whether this is a direct reflection on your incumbent vendor's historical performance. Without a change, this deficit is unlikely to be resolved. This deficit represents a material opportunity cost to the district. It hinders the district's ability to provide stable healthcare coverage to your employees and their families, but it also impacts your ability to hire more teachers, reduce class sizes, and enhance curriculum for your students. Alternatively, United Healthcare is offering a claim cost guarantee of negative 1% for the first year of the contract. This guaranteed commitment is expected to save the district $17.8 million in year one of our proposed contract and should erase the district's deficit in less than four years. Furthermore, United Healthcare's proposal improves many aspects of coverage for your employees and their families without any reductions in benefits. There would be a minimal employee disruption as our provider network matches to over 99.5% of providers currently being utilized by your employees and their families today. We are matching all four plan designs and our provider networks are more expansive. We are also including four additional dedicated full-time employees for the district and staffing two medical vans through an expanded partnership with Orange Blossom Family Health. Lastly, we are prepared to execute on implementation, ensuring readiness by your April open enrollment date and for your October 1st effective date. The decision facing the board is crucial. If the employee benefit deficit is not addressed, it will lead to serious consequences for the district, its students, and your employees. UHC remains committed to providing a better solution that will lead to lower costs and a better experience for your employees and their families. I urge the board to consider the alternative solution with United Healthcare. Thank you for time and attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions from board members? I do have one question.
Sure.
The negative 1%,
Yes.
That's for one year.
There was a year-one guarantee. The projection for the all four years, if you run at a normal trend off of that savings in year one, it would achieve a reduction to the deficit.
All right, so year one, it would be a reduction of 17.8, I think you said.
Yes, that's what we calculated.
So are you saying that if you remained at that level, it would be eliminated four years?
If we achieved that savings in year one and then trend continues to run at a normal rate thereafter, it would by orders of magnitude reduce the deficit by that $67 million.
So are you locked in at that negative one and only increasing by the market trend? Is that what you're saying?
That's, we're locked in for a year-one guarantee.
Yeah.
And then if trend runs at market-level trend every year thereafter, the impact of the deficit for those subsequent years would reduce the deficit by $67 million over four years.
But I don't think we have a contract commitment from you on that.
We were asked to provide a year-one guarantee. The projection, the projection in terms of the savings in year one, if you think about, like, if you, if you, think of it as a mortgage interest buydown. If you pay an extra payment on your mortgage, it reduces your mortgage by X amount of years. The savings that you would see in year one, if you then apply a rate of trend increase to that savings, in the subsequent years, it would reduce your deficit.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. What's to prevent you from increasing, not, not maintaining that level plus the trend, but just recouping what we saved in the first year by increasing it more than the trend?
We've been, we've, we were, we were asked to provide a year-one guarantee. We have every belief that we would have the ability to run, to achieve a trend that is equal to or better than market trend. If we do that, it would result in a reduction to your deficit within four years.
We don't have a guarantee of that. You have every reason to believe it, but do we have a guarantee?
We weren't asked to provide a guarantee for four years.
All right, thank you. Member Salamanca?
Thank you. So I had a question, which was more on the coverage itself. So when you were talking about the coverage, you're talking about our teachers and staff wouldn't have to change their doctor per se in this case.
As a part of the analysis, we were asked to do a provider disruption analysis. When we do that, we receive 12 full months of claims. That includes the provider and a dollar spent, visits, encounters. We match those providers utilized up against our network and on total dollars spent, we had a 99.5% match to our network. I would, I would also add that there, the current plan, the SureFit plan, which is the low-cost solution for those members, currently has network limitations where you need to live within the particular ZIP code. The plan that we're proposing to replace that plan is a statewide solution and has a total national network access. So presumably, if you live anywhere within the state of Florida, you now have access to that lowest-cost option plan.
Got it. Okay. I think that was my, my question on that. And then the last one was on implementation. So you talked about, obviously, this deadline is fast approaching and this board has made it a priority to, you know, put this into the market and get better pricing. And that's kind of why we ended up here, was part of our conversations with the union. And so you talked about, what was your timeline to implement something like this?
We're, we're more than prepared to achieve the, the open enrollment deadline of April 1st. We've actually already committed some throwaway work in the hopes of winning this contract. So we are prepared for open enrollment and we can easily fulfill the October 1st deadline for implementation.
Got it. Okay. And then a little bit more on that trend line. So I know you're doing the 1% guarantee and then after that is to be determined. But do you have a sense on the average of what kind of you're seeing across the country of increase?
Sure. Our self-insured trend nationally is running on average below 7% and in the state of Florida, it's below 6.
Got it. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Member Gallo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that you mentioned the 99, I think, 0.5% overlap between physicians on our current plan and then what United would have. Specifically for the free plan, what's the percentage of overlap on that?
Member Gallo, in the analysis for the NHP, the SureFit, was 99%.
It was 99%.
99%, based on the claim information that was provided in the repricing analysis for January 17th.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo. One, one follow-up on that. You've given us the overlap or, based on dollars. Do you have it based on employees?
We have it based on encounters.
We have, as a part of the negotiation process with Gallagher, we did indicate that if the district was able to provide member identifier to the claims, we could actually drill down at a member level and identify those members who are disrupted and do a proactive outreach to those individuals. The other item to point out is that the overall dis-
Can I stop you for, so you indicated that you would be able to provide that. Does that mean you didn't get the?
We weren't provided that information. Usually, and that has nothing to do with the analysis, usually member identifier to the, to the actual providers utilized is not usually provided as a part of an overall analysis. That's something that's provided usually during the implementation process. So you can get line of sight to those individuals who are potentially disrupted.
All right, thank you. And I interrupted you. Go ahead.
No, and I would say we also provided a network recruitment commitment guarantee. So what we had committed that in the event there are any providers that are out of network for us, that are in-network for the incumbent vendor, that we would- for us, that are in-network for the incumbent vendor, that we would work with the district to identify those providers, and we've made a, a commitment to put a portion of our fees at risk to make an outreach to attempt to recruit those providers. It's not a guarantee to definitely bring them in. There might be some providers who don't meet our credentialing standards, some providers who may have retired since that report, since that provider was utilized, but we have made a guaranteed commitment to do an outreach to recruit those providers to minimize any level of disruption there might be.
Okay, so you're not willing to commit that you can bring the retirees back? Sorry.
Oh, the retired providers back?
Yes, yes, okay. All right, there's no other questions at this time. Next speaker?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kimberly Funderburke.
Perfect height.
Yes, ironic.
All right. Well, thank you, Chair Jacobs, School Board members, and Commissioner Vasquez for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I'm Kim Funderburke, and I serve as National President for Cigna Healthcare's Government, Education, and Health Systems Business Division. And on behalf of Cigna Healthcare and my entire team, I just want to sincerely thank you for the ability to serve OCPS and your employees and their families over the past 20 years. We certainly are very appreciative of that partnership, and now for the recommendation to hopefully continue that partnership. We recognize the significance of this decision and appreciate the trust that you have placed in us. Selecting a healthcare partner is one of the most important choices for an organization, and at Cigna Healthcare, we take this responsibility seriously and are committed, as we have shown, to being more than just a benefits provider. We're a strategic partner dedicated to the well-being of OCPS employees and their families. Our expert team certainly understands the unique needs of OCPS, and we continue to invest in innovative solutions to improve both access to care, to drive, to drive improved outcomes, and to manage costs effectively. Our collaboration has certainly delivered significant measurable results. Over the past six years, OCPS has saved more than $87 million through Cigna Healthcare's medical management programs. In the last year, OCPS achieved an 83% gaps in care closure rate, ensuring that your employees and their families are getting the healthcare that they need, that necessary treatment. And OCPS's five-year average medical trend of 3.6% remains below both our National Book of Business and competitor trends. The question was posed, what is the national trend for United Healthcare? To put this on record, Cigna's national trend is 5.5%, as proven and validated by third parties. To further enhance access to care and at no additional cost to OCPS, in 2024, we introduced Cigna Wellness Mobile Van. It's a dedicated mobile unit that provides onsite biometric screenings, skin cancer screenings, and personalized preventive and chronic disease coaching directly to OCPS employees. By bringing healthcare services to employees where they work, we're removing barriers to preventive care, helping them to both better understand and to mitigate their health risks, and guiding them towards the right resources to improve their well-being and vitality. So through proven cost management strategies, value-based care innovations, and a deep commitment to OCPS, we're confident in our ability to continue to serve and deliver those results.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any questions? No questions, we'll take our next speaker. I'm sorry, Member Salamanca?
Yeah, I had a question. I mean, I'm not sure which speaker is best to answer, so I'll definitely defer to you on that, and I'm happy to listen from the next one. But my bit was on that trend, right? So I just want to clarify, there wasn't any trend guarantees from Cigna, so we can assume, or maybe there was. I just want to understand that cost difference between that first year and all the other years, or assume that's the average as well.
Sure, so through this direct negotiation process with Gallagher, we did provide indeed a five-year trend guarantee. In that first year, the guarantee is a little over 5%, and then in years two, it's indexed over the prior year. And so it was a five-year guarantee. In the first year, it's dollar-for-dollar, and then in the second year, it's a two-year indexed payout.
Got it.
And, and we offered either, we did a discount guarantee or a trend guarantee, whichever you decide you'd like to take.
Got it, understood, thank you.
Member Salamanca? All right, thank you. We'll take our next speaker. And Mr. Palmieri?
It's fine, I'll waive my time.
Okay. Who is our next speaker?
It was Ms. Smith.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry. Come back. You're recognized.
Thank you. Are there more questions, or?
Mm-mm. Oh, you're waving. I'm sorry, I thought you said you're waiting for your time, and then he said it is your Sorry about that. Who is our next speaker? We still have one more.
You have no speakers.
Really?
Yes, that was it.
Okay.
That is it.
Mr. Palmieri, then you're our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and just wanted to give a brief overview of how we got here. So as you all know, we originally had a request for proposal that went out, it was June of last year, and we had responses in July of last year, and then we had two separate committee meetings. We had an evaluation committee made up of district staff, risk management, representative from Ocasas, representatives from CTA, representatives from OESPA. So we had a meeting on August 2nd to discuss the proposals, and what happened coming out of that August 2nd meeting was the group said we need to have presentations by both Cigna and United. So on August 2nd, we say, hey, we're setting up presentations for Cigna and United. August 19th, we have those presentations coming from Cigna and United. We have, the committee considers it, and by a vote of 10 to 1, coming out of that, the recommendation was Cigna. So the notice of intended decision to recommend Cigna was August 20th. August 22nd, we get a notice of protest from United Healthcare. We received the formal protest on September the 5th. We have a protest resolution meeting coming out of it on August, or September 16th, excuse me. And then on September 17th, given that we had a formal protest, we met in executive session with the Board to get direction with respect to how to deal with that protest. What came out of that is we decided to reject all bids with the intent to agree to retain a third-party consultant to evaluate the, the United Healthcare and Cigna proposals and to thereafter enter into direct negotiations, and I'll talk about direct negotiations in a second. So we go ahead and we do that, we retain a third-party consultant, the Highland Group, to, to look at these two plans and to evaluate them. We notify on October the 7th of both United Healthcare and Cigna that we are, retain the Highland Group. And then a couple weeks later, on October 21st, we get a phone call from United raising objections with respect to the Highland Group. So given that, and given that the time period was getting greatly compressed to have a decision going on this, we got into, we got both parties on the phone, we had a WebEx with them on November 1st, and we said, we want you all to give us a list of three consultants that you both jointly agree on to review the, the proposals. And so when we do that, on November 7th, we get communication from United Healthcare and Cigna that they jointly agreed that Gallagher, who is our existing consultant, would review all of these proposals. So we go through the process of how to do that, and what Gallagher wanted to do and thought was necessary to review these proposals is to do a repricing, is to take 12 months' worth of claims data, the last 12 months we had, and to say, okay, based upon your two plans, Cigna and United, how would those be priced? So we get the 12 months of claims data from our incumbent provider, which was Cigna, on January the 6th. On January the 10th, we, Gallagher sends those 12 months' worth of claims data to both parties and said, you have a week, we need your repricing data. Cigna and United, on January the 17th, provided that repricing data. On January the 30th, we get their, Gallagher's pricing analysis for both parties, and we analyze that. Now, I'm going to let you all know, you all know this, and I think those folks for both Cigna and United know this, everything that has been submitted with regard to pricing by both parties has been declared proprietary, trade secret, and information that they do not want disclosed. Gallagher also engaged in an analysis of this. Gallagher's analysis, they told us, was proprietary, confidential, and trade secret. So when we go forward here, it's going to be very hard to talk numbers because all of that information has been deemed proprietary, trade secret. So we get the analysis back, we then, as staff, went to Gallagher and said, based upon what we saw in various areas from both parties, where we thought we could get concessions, we asked Gallagher to set up a meeting with both of them and to have negotiations to where we would get the best offer we could possibly get coming out of this, because that's, the Board wanted, coming out of this, to get the best deal we could possibly get. That's what we were charged with doing. So on February the 6th, we had, Gallagher had direct negotiations with both Cigna and United to get their final offers. February 7th, the next day, the both parties had to follow up in writing to confirm those offers. February 10th, we receive the analysis, the trade secret analysis from Gallagher with regard to the, the offers that were received. And then we met on February the 11th in a closed bargaining session with respect, with the Board, to get direction, and I'll talk about the reason why it was a closed bargaining session and why we thought that was appropriate in just a second. We get the direction coming out of that meeting from the Board because our Joint Fringe Benefits Committee under our contract was having a meeting on February the 24th, and the Board needed to, or that committee and our representatives on that committee need to have direction which way we thought we were going with respect to which third-party administrator we were going to utilize. So February 11th, we have the closed session. On February the 13th, Cigna, United, and both CTA and OESPA were notified that our notice of intended selection was going to be Cigna. February 24th, we had a meeting with the Joint Fringe Benefits Committee in which our folks on that committee informed the unions that we intend to stay with Cigna. So a couple things that have been raised throughout this process that I think need to be addressed, just so we're all clear about it. With respect to the closed session, as you all know, we have a statute 447-605 subsection 1 that says discussions between the chief executive officer and her representatives and the legislative body relative to collective bargaining shall be closed and exempt from the provisions of 286, the requirement that we notice and have meetings in the sunshine. The law is legion on that, that we get to have closed bargaining sessions. Why did we need a closed bargaining session? As I said, under our contract, we have a Joint Fringe Benefits Committee, and one of the things that the Joint Fringe Benefits Committee is tasked to do is as follows. This is Article 2, Section L1 of the contract. In addition, the Joint Fringe Benefits Committee will review and recommend changes in third-party administrators. So Joint Fringe Benefit Committee needed direction from this Board to determine whether or not we were going to, in fact, have a change in third-party administrators when they had that discussion with both CTA and OESPA. So there was a necessity to have that meeting closed to get direction from the Board. Additionally, quite frankly, since everybody declared their numbers trade secret, I'm not going to advise you to discuss anybody's numbers here because of that declaration of it being trade secret, and I'll go into why in a second. But that fostered a robust discussion. As you all know, we sat in that room for hours discussing the, the numbers that Gallagher in their repricing and how they determined what the numbers actually were, and we talked about various things. I mean, you heard one party reference the trend guarantee up here tonight. That was a heavy topic of discussion in that meeting, right? So the Board had a comprehensive discussion, gave direction to our bargaining team which way to go, but we also need to approve the contract for the third-party administrator. That had to be done in an open meeting like this. That's a requirement of the law. So we've done that previously. The last time we had a third-party administrator contract voted on, it was January 8th, 2019. We had it on the consent agenda when we awarded Cigna back in 2019 to have the contract. So this isn't the normal standard process that we would go to approve the actual third-party administrator contract, right? Direct negotiations, there was questions about why we didn't just go with the RFP and why we didn't redo another RFP, and can we actually do direct negotiations? So Section 10-1004 Florida statute says, "The State Board of Education, made by rule, provide for alternate procedures for school districts for bidding and purchasing in cases where the character of the item requested renders competitive bidding impractical." So the State Board of Education has then turned and adopted the rule that says, it's "The requirements for competitive solicitations for commodities or contractual services from three or more sources is hereby waived, as authorized in Section 10-1004, for the purchase by district school boards of professional services which shall include, without limitation, health services involving examinations, diagnosis, treatment, prevention, medical consultation, or administration." Obviously, we're here on a medical third-party administration, so we have the right to directly negotiate under the statute. The Board's policy, Policy DJB, also allows for the direct negotiation of services. "The Board or designee may approve contracts using direct negotiations where allowed by law. The senior director of procurement services or designee shall maintain adequate documentation commensurate with the value of the contract, reflecting the rationale for using direct negotiations. It's a procurement method and the basis for determining the results, the resulting contract in the best interest of the district. Of course, if it's in excess of $50,000, and this contract certainly is in excess of $50,000, it shall be submitted to the Board for approval," hence why we're sitting here again tonight. Now, with respect to trade secrets, Florida statute, Section 119-0715, "A trade secret held by an agency is confidential and exempt," from Section 119-07 and from Article 24, Section 1 of the Florida Constitution. The staff analysis creating that bill says, "This bill creates a public records exemption for trade secrets held by an agency. The public records exemption would apply for those agencies who do not have an agency-specific public records exemption for trade secrets." So this statute directly brings us into protecting trade secrets as designated by the party. Medical pricing, is that a trade secret? The courts have said yes. Case Lake Worth Surgical Center, Inc. versus Gates, 266 Southern Third, 198 Florida, Fourth DCA, 2019. "We agree with the Second District that the internal cost structure information, including methodologies or formulas used to compute pricing and insurance reimbursement rates, constitutes trade secret information that should be protected from disclosure to third parties if obtained through a discovery process." So medical information such as this has been held by the courts to be trade secrets. Now, I don't cite these next two statutes lightly, and I'm not doing it in any way to, to threaten anybody, but I need you all to be aware of it when you have these discussions. Disclosures of trade secrets in a public meeting, it's a felony. Section 815-04. "A person who willingly, knowingly, and without authorization discloses or takes data, programs, or supporting documentation that is trade secret or is confidential as provided by law commits an offense against intellectual property." And then Section 815-045, "The legislature finds that it's a public necessity that trade secret information, as defined in Section 812-081, be expressly made confidential and exempt from public records law because it's a felony to disclose such records." So with respect to the discussion the Board's going to have tonight, we had a lot of discussions in our closed bargaining meeting about pricing and whose prices was better and, and all of that. I'm going to caution you all to not disclose specific numbers. I know one party disclosed a specific number. They, I guess, can waive their own trade secrets, but I'm not going to recommend that you all waive their trade secrets in any way. I think the discussion that you all can have is-- I think the discussion that you all can have is, you know, we had a comprehensive look at the repricing structure that went on. You know, you all asked questions about it, and based upon your analysis of the repricing analysis that we got from Gallagher, you all thought that the best value for the district was either Cigna, United. Anything more, and obviously you all have the discretion to say which one you believe what brought the better value to the district. That is the board's decision, clearly. But anything more disgusting, specific pricing, I'm cautioning you against doing. So, I'm happy to answer any questions coming out of that, and I'm sorry for taking that amount of time, but I thought it was necessary.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Palmerini. Member Gallo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I do have a couple of questions. In relation to bargaining, because this has been brought up, the statute under bargaining that allowed us to go into closed session to discuss the trade secrets, does there have to be, in order for us to go into closed session, does there have to be something scheduled already in terms of bargaining? Like, we had a closed session on healthcare. We know that it is going to be bargained, is the premiums that are going to be bargained. But is there any other tenet that has to be met to meet that closed session?
So, there's a couple of things that you need to remember here. One, we had the Joint Fringe Benefit Committee that was scheduled for February 24th before we had this meeting. So, we needed to be able to give direction. And we're getting very close to the point. I think March 15th was our drop, drop, dead deadline to figure out which one of these two we were going to utilize, right? Number one. Number two, any time that you were doing something to implement a provision of the collective bargaining agreement that you're in, and if a collective bargaining agreement requires you to have a meeting or to have a committee meeting with the union, you all can meet in a closed session in order to implement that contract provision to give direction to your bargaining team. So, I think both of those instances gave us the justification to enter into a closed bargaining meeting. Now, having said that, as you correctly identified, we are eventually going to have to because fringe benefits opens every year with negotiations. We're going to have negotiations with the union with respect to the plan going forward, you know, things like premiums. How much, if premiums increase, how much are we going to cover versus what we're going to ask them to cover? You know, plan design things. Things like that are all going to be collectively bargained, right? But with respect to the choice of the third-party administrator, you all had to give direction to your Joint Fringe Benefits Committee about which one they were going to go with.
Thank you, Mr. Palmerini. So, is the fringe benefits committee, is that considered a bargaining committee?
It's a committee that gathers information in order to help make recommendations to the bargaining team. Now, can the fringe benefit committee make decisions in and of itself? No, it can't. But the bargaining team gets recommendations from the fringe benefit committee in order to help their work in collective bargaining.
Are these, is the fringe benefit committees, are they open meetings? Can anybody attend? Are they under the sunshine?
I'm pretty sure they're open. I'll have to defer to our folks back there, but I'm pretty sure that they're open meetings.
And then, in relation to the rubric that we initially used and then decided to go into direct negotiations, there's no doubt in my mind that we did better buy our employees by going into direct negotiations. We just, we absolutely 100% saved money by doing direct negotiations. But I'm hoping that as we move forward, and even when we look at other big contracts like pharmaceuticals, that we really kind of take the rubric that we use out of the equation and use something different. Because that rubric doesn't give a good, it's not a good tool to determine best pricing. So, that would be my recommendation, because I believe that even the union, we got a letter from the union today, they didn't have a lot of faith in that, in the rubric and the validity of it. So, I would challenge us to use something different and figure out a way that we can work with the union more. I know that they're upset that they weren't more involved in the process, especially at impasse, we said that they would be involved in the process. I also understand the issue that we have with proprietary information. So, I don't know how or what that looks like. Maybe it looks like they sign an NDA, but it would be helpful if we did work with them and include them. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Gallo. I'm up next, but I see the superintendent. Well, I'd rather hear from you, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, although this process, and I'll speak for myself, has been painful, and, you know, we've heard from all parties their concerns, we have had some lessons learned that we definitely are moving forward. And I think one of those lessons learned is that when we're dealing with some of our contracts, the RFP process may not be the best way to go simply because of the expertise that's needed. I do want to echo your comments, Board Member Gallo, that we absolutely were able to get much better pricing than what we were originally presented through the RFP process. So, we definitely will be taking some of the processes that we used here moving forward with some of the other contracts.
Thank you, Superintendent. Two things. I want to react, Member Gallo, I think, to some of your questions and I think your concern about the process we used and whether, I think where you were going is whether somebody might challenge, whether we had the authority to do that. I do believe that Mr. Palmerini's assessment of this situation is accurate. But the other thing that came to mind as I was listening to the discussion is, if there is a question that somebody wants to raise, either party is equally capable of raising it. So, I don't, for me, I mean, I think it's important that we have confidence that we did the right thing in the right way, but I don't, for me, that's not a determinant because this is a huge contract. And if somebody wants to challenge it, they're going to challenge it. It could be their party. The one question that I'm struggling with a little bit is, and I can use the negative 1% because United Health has put that out in the public, but that we didn't ask for a commitment beyond one year. Can anybody speak to that?
Yeah, I can speak to that. And Ms. Kocodis and I were very clear when we went back to Gallagher. And without getting into the specifics of what we were offering, we wanted to get the best trend guarantee that we could for the entirety of the contract. And we told them to shoot for the moon, ask for as much as we possibly could get, including, you know, can we get guarantees for the entirety of the contract?
Well, I ask that because that is something that came up in our closed-door session, I think by several of us, several times. Could we get, could we lock that in? Because no matter what we hear here, if we have a guarantee for one year and we don't have a commitment that, that they're only going to raise it by the trend, there's still an uncomfortableness that I think most of the board members had, if not all the board members had, about what does that mean for two, three, four, and five? So, I just, I want some comfort level here that the, that that was posed to United Health.
It was posed.
Are the meetings recorded?
Well, that's...
I'm sorry.
Apparently, United's saying, "No, that's not the, I can tell you, that's not the information that Ms. Kocodis and I got from Gallagher."
Okay. All right. Member Salamanca.
I was going to ask the same. I want to echo Member Gallo's point on, this process has been incredibly frustrating, and all of us, the priority for us was decreasing the costs and getting the best price we could get by going out the process, right? The reason why we did this to begin with was concerns about the cost of healthcare and what it has meant to us every time we've been a bargaining, every time we've been at impasse. And I do believe that because we got away from the general process, that we had the initial RFP process to direct negotiation, both providers came back with much better numbers than we would have gotten otherwise. And so, with that, I definitely feel very confident that the number that we're ending up with is much better with either one of them than it would have been with the initial process. And so, that, direct negotiation itself has been definitely frustrating. I think it's a lot of plain telephone, and there's a third party, there's the board, there's our legal counsel, there's the two sides. And I took one meeting with each Cigna and United to kind of hear a bit about what they have had in their process and learn from what's working, what's not. Got a lot of feedback on procurement, which I have communicated with the superintendent as well, on probably not the best rubric, probably not a super clear process, a lot of learnings for all of us on what this means for procurement moving forward. So, I do appreciate that this process allowed us to better understand ways that we could be better. I do appreciate both United and Cigna raising kind of yellow flags about what they felt and experienced from the other side. And so, I did want to thank both parties for that. As Chair Jacob said, in direct negotiations, you can all raise flags, and everybody raised flags for all kinds of things. And that was appreciated and whatnot. But I did have that same question, which was, it was my understanding that the only reason we got the one-year trend, which was disclosed by United, was that it was just that first year and that kind of, all the other years wasn't really on the table. And so, I don't, I still, I think I sit here today, not quite sure what the truth is. So, that's very frustrating as part of this process. But, yeah, we had a lot of discussion about this.
Thank you, Madam Salamanca. Member Vannas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Member Salamanca really just said a lot of what I was going to say, so I'll keep it very brief. I too had concerns about the process, and concerns about the process were raised to me by both United Healthcare and Cigna. I really appreciate you sharing that. And though I am thankful from, you know, from the schools, from the district's perspective that we have an ultimate savings, and that has resulted from the direct negotiation, I also think the process itself is important. And we are, and I raised this before, but we are a large school district, and it's important that our vendors and that our community feel that we are, you know, conducting our, you know, conducting these contracts and finding the best price, but also doing it a transparent way that people can get behind and support and trust. So, I just wanted to share that and echo some of the comments that were made specifically relating to the process as well.
Thank you, Member Vannas. Okay, so coming back to this, this one, I would say, big question mark in my mind, but I'm not so sure, to be honest with you, that it's as big a question when I think through this logically. So, United Health wants this contract. They're putting everything they have on the table, but you didn't lock in that trend that you were not going to increase, you didn't lock that in, and you didn't, because we didn't ask. And that's not making sense to me. It's, I mean, I have to figure out who I believe, but it doesn't make sense to me that you didn't put it on the table if that's what you meant. So, it's not on the table. And so, what also, to be honest, what also troubles me is, for this process to work, the negotiation has to take place somewhere, once and for all. And the negotiation took place with Gallagher as our point. And I'll just lay it out there. I agreed to take your call, and it defies everything I've probably ever done in the 20-something years that I've been in office, because I think the process was over. And, Jose, I have such enormous respect for you that that is the only reason that I took the phone call. And the reason, again, is not that I don't want to hear from you, but when we establish a process and then you come back, what I was afraid of was you were going to try to renegotiate a better deal. And that's just not how this works. And it shouldn't work that way. And that's not what you did on the phone. You absolutely did not. You explained some additional information. You didn't try to, you know, up the ante, because, again, it's an issue of fairness and trust. And we have to be able to trust our healthcare administrator. We have to. So, that's so important. And so, I didn't lose any trust in that call. The call was great, I appreciate that. But the idea that you didn't put, what you just said up there, you didn't put that on the table because they didn't ask. I just, why wouldn't you have put it on the table whether they asked or not? Nobody asked, so you didn't do it? They didn't say, "Put your best foot, your best off..." Okay, well, I would still do it. If I was you, I'd say, "This is a negotiated deal. I'm going to give everything I got right here." That's what I would have done. So, I'm sorry, I'm not in your business, but I think you missed an opportunity if that's what you meant. It might have changed the outcome. The outcome hasn't been decided, but quite honestly, I was supportive prior to that. And right now, that has undermined my trust. So, it was extremely close. For me, it was extremely close. But for the record, I will be going with Cigna. Member Salamanca?
Thank you so much, Chair. I will be voting against. I get your point on United could have come to the table and given us more than one year at a negative trend. The reality is, and this was disclosed, right, United is at negative 1% trend and Cigna is at 5.5% trend. That's what they said. That's what they told me today. So, it's from negative to 5.5 positive. So, I can, I, you know, I said this in closed session, I will say here. I don't, like, I don't understand the math where Cigna not having any negative trend, period, ends up being better numbers. I just, I don't. I never saw the math. I went back through it. And so, as a fiduciary, I did not, at least from our conversations, from my conversations with folks, understand how Cigna was a better deal for the district. And it is unfortunate, of course, that the union wasn't part of some of these conversations as well. But this will ultimately impact folks. And so, for me, I will be voting against this today for that reason. Can't disclose any other numbers, of course, but, yeah, that would be why. It wasn't close at all to me. Thank you.
Okay. I would agree with you. If we knew that it was negative 1 and it was only going to increase by the trend, and we asked that over and over again, and we didn't have any assurance, and I'm still not sure that I have assurance, I'm hearing that they would have put that in, but they weren't asked. So, we come back to, so do we ask now? And do we, huh? Huh?
I don't think it'll be above the average.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know. And I don't think that...
You were addressing it earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
For the record, we had a one-day notice in terms of the negotiation session with Gallagher. When we went into the negotiation session, which I participated in along with my colleague, we were instructed to focus on two things. One was the discount guarantee, and the other thing was the trend guarantee. Specific to the trend guarantee, what Gallagher instructed us to focus on was two things. Number one, we had provided a trend guarantee rather than putting fees, and this is proprietary, I'm waiving the confidentiality of this. We had provided a negative 1% trend guarantee that placed 50% of our fees at risk. The initial proposal was to discount the administrative fees that we were charging upfront. And if we met the guarantee of negative 1, the discount guarantee... And if we met the guarantee of negative one, the district would pay us back that year-one credit, so that you didn't have to hedge on our performance. Gallagher asked for us to reverse that and provide the guarantee, but only pay out if we missed the guarantee. So you would pay the full fee in year one, and then if we missed, we would pay out. That was, we were instructed by Gallagher to focus on that. We were also instructed by Gallagher to make that year-one guarantee more competitive. The initial guarantee provided that 50% of fees with a sloped payout. So if we missed by, call it 1%, we would pay out, I can't remember the exact amount, call it 12.5% of the total fees. And it would step up as we missed more on the trend. We came, we were instructed to focus on making that guarantee more aggressive. So we converted that year-one guarantee to a dollar-for-dollar payout. What that means is if we missed that negative 1%, we would begin to immediately be paying back the fees. So rather than having to wait for us to miss the trend commitment by 5 or 6% before the district received the full 50% of the fees back, the district would be reimbursed on a dollar-for-dollar basis, which meant that if you do the math, if we missed by anywhere between 2% to 2.5%, the full value of that 50% would be coming back to the district. Those are the two things that we were instructed to focus on by Gallagher, along with a long list of a number of other things that we had less than 24 hours to respond to. There was no request made for us to provide an out-year guarantee. The other thing I would just say as well, when it comes to trend, we all just lived through one of the worst inflationary environments since the late '70s. Being able to predict medical trend three or four or five years from now, I'm not going to tell you that we can do that. What we did not see any value in was trying to provide an index guarantee that was based off of however we performed in year one and then indexing off of that, because your out-year guarantees would be based on your actual year-one performance, not what you actually guaranteed. So our focus was to put our money where our mouth was in year one. You're making a bet on us in year one. The last thing I would just say is that the only reason that we ended up in this negotiated, the direct negotiation, and the district saw this additional savings that came through it, is because we wanted to earn the right to serve you and your employees and their families. It's why we protested. We did, we felt there were irregularities. We believed that there was enough of a concern around those irregularities that we entered into a direct negotiation. And so it was through our direct interest in wanting to point out where there were irregularities and to have transparency and to put a full truthful offer in front of you, that resulted in this better outcome for the district, your employees, and their families. So I just wanted to clear that up, because we were not at any point asked for out-year guarantees.
Okay. All right.
Any questions?
Do you want to have the opportunity to speak?
Yeah, just a minute. Member Gallagher, did you have a question for? Okay, okay. Please.
Trade secret.
Yes, thank you again for the opportunity. So I just wanted to take a step back. In the initial RFP process, there wasn't a request for a trend guarantee at all. So to United's credit, they put that forth. We put forth a discount guarantee. Point two that I will make is that they are, their trend guarantee is based on their estimation of what our claims are, right? So based on the information that we had, our claims were inflated. And so is that negative 1%? What's the basis of it? And so you have to do an apples-to-apples comparison. They took some of the reporting from the open records and made some assumptions about some of our claims and all of that. We did bring that up in discussion. So there was some, we believe, that they have overstated our claims. So that's point two that I will make. Thirdly, we entered into direct negotiations via Gallagher, who we both agreed would be, you know, they would be subjective in the process. We always want a transparent process. We're happy to do RFP. We're happy to do direct negotiation. We know that we are the better carrier and that we've served your population well. So during this direct negotiation process, Gallagher said, "We have been instructed by the board to come back to you. You are to do this laundry list of things, but at the end of the day, they want to see the best offer from you. We want to see multi-year, whatever it takes. We want you to put your best foot forward." Did they say, "Cigna, you have to bring a five-year trend guarantee"? Absolutely not. You know, they said they wanted to see multi-year, but to the point that you made earlier, we wanted to put our money where our mouth was, and we put forth both of those. So a discount guarantee for five years, trend guarantee for five years, depending upon whatever it is that you wanted to take. And although our trend guarantee is 5%, we know, I just told you about your average trend being 3.6%. And then as we are implementing even more innovative solutions, we expect for that, you know, to remain stable and even at that level.
Hang on a minute.
And our national trend, 5.5%.
You said your trend is what?
The trend for your particular plan on average for the last five years has been And that's evident, and we provide claims reporting on a monthly basis, so it's validated through the claims. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Pomerini and then Member Gallagher.
I was queuing in for Member Ferrant.
Oh, Member Ferrant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So I just wanted to make a statement and just say how really this has been such a difficult process, because I think we've heard from the teachers and everybody that's, you know, under us, so all the employees who are really wanting to have a healthcare that is affordable and that works for them. And so I will say, from my perspective, I felt like, you know, I would listen to one and it sounded amazing, but then there were some things that, you know, lacked. And then the next one part would be amazing, but then another part would lack. And so it really does come down to, we decide which one is going to be the best for the district. I did, you know, I was, I was kind of hoping to try something new, because I feel like we've done the same thing for the last five years. We were going in the hole in it and, you know, spending a lot of our money on this health insurance. And so I wanted to try something new. And so for that reason, I will be voting, you know, not in favor of this tonight. I was kind of hoping to try something different, although I can definitely see the perspective of the majority of the board that's also saying that, you know, things could maybe not pan out the way that it is looking, that, or that it seems, you know, maybe as it's being presented. And so it was definitely not an easy decision, but I think it's, at the end of the day, I think either one is going to give us, you know, help our employees have great healthcare and get the healthcare needs that they have. And so just wanted to share those thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Ferrant. Member Gallagher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I just wanted to, I've talked to both parties and I like, I mean, both companies are great companies. I do disagree with Member Salamanca. I don't, I don't think that there was a large gap. When you looked at all of the analysis through Gallagher and you went to the back page and you had to compare and it was confusing, I actually went back and reviewed the numbers again with Mr. Pomerini. I had some follow-up questions to ask him. It was very tight. Like it was here or there. But as Member Ferrant just mentioned, there's stuff with each plan that you're like, "Oh, you like this," but you don't, it was really, really, really close. So I just want to state from my perspective, I felt that it was, it was very close and it was a really hard decision to make. I thought Gallagher did a really good job of breaking down the information for us in a way that we could understand it. We asked more questions of Gallagher when we were in that meeting, so I feel like we really did do diligence in the way that we handled it after talking to both sides. I had more questions. As I mentioned, I went to Mr. Pomerini. I will say that in talking to both vendors, I didn't learn anything new in those meetings that I didn't already know from the session from Gallagher. I may have forgotten where, I forgot that half the money was going to come from the ASOs and that was clearly in, that was in the analysis when I went back and spoke to John, I saw that. But there was no new information that we gleaned. So I just want the public and everybody to know that Gallagher did a really good job of informing us, and I think we were informed on the details of the direct negotiations. So that's it. That's just what I want to say.
Member Salamanca?
Thank you, Chair. I think it depended how you did the numbers, whether it was best case or worst case. And in worst case, it could be tight. In best case, it was not tight, because you're assuming that folks are kind of showing up at the best they can. So those numbers were different. I think to the numbers that were just brought up, right? Our trend for OCPS, Cigna has these numbers, are 3. something percent. I don't think it's the best offer. They're averaging at a 5%. That gap to me is just profits, or they're averaging it out at some point, which is kind of what maybe United will do with the 1% and then bring us back up to the national or state average. But that negative 1% on its own was kind of the winning factor for me, that I thought was good. I also, I do think Cigna's been a great partner. They've worked with us in so many different ways, but we've been with them for 20 years and we have seen what the costs have been. And so I was also very excited to just try something new and give an opportunity to a large provider who also did provide a really compelling offer. And yeah, sure, the range in worst-case scenario was small, but in best-case scenario, that range was pretty significant. So, thank you. That'll be all.
Any further comments, discussion from the board members? All right. We have a motion? I'm sorry? Okay. Have a motion. Floor is open for a motion.
Thank you for recognizing me.
You're recognized.
I move that we stay with the insurance carrier that we've had, Cigna.
We have a motion to accept the recommendation of our staff. We have a second motion, I'm sorry, by Member Felder, second by Member Byrd. All in favor? Show of hands. Show of hands.
I am not, I am on the fence, okay? I just, I have trouble making a decision and it doesn't happen to me very often, but I think this is so important that I'm on the fence. I just, I need to see more. I need to understand more. I need, how beneficial, I just want to make sure that our teachers and our supporting staff are happy, okay? So that's what I want. I want to make sure that it's beneficial to them. But I'm still, maybe I'm just ignorant one, but it's too big for me. But I'm on the fence, okay? Sorry about that.
Yeah, one thing I need to clarify is you have to vote. If this puts your mind at ease, I completely agree, it's a very tough decision. I'm not, I honestly don't think that there's a bad decision from the standpoint of this, we are better for the process we've been through. Member Ferrant, let me ask Member Ferrant's vote. Member Ferrant? I think I know the answer.
I'll be voting in opposition.
Okay. Okay, so right now, we have two votes in opposition and we have five votes in favor. So if it makes you feel any better, it doesn't really matter how you vote.
I'm in opposition. Okay.
All right. All right. The motion passes by five to three. Next item on the agenda. We're on to informational items, is that correct? Informational items? Dr. Vasquez?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I have just, one announcement due to time. An update on our, let's read, OCPS. As you know, we have been working very, very hard in that area. Board Member Gallagher even made a plea today at our student town hall at East River, asking, asking the students to please read, because I think she stated District One is at the bottom. But for our recognition this evening, we have, the district with the highest participation goes to School Board Member Douglas, and the district with the increase in participation goes to Board Member Byrd. So congratulations to both of you.
I would like a contest on Steady Island, on the usage of Steady Island in all schools. I have it on good authority I might win, so.
Well, Member Douglas kept the trophy in her car. So luckily, she is one of the winners, but I'm a little upset that I don't at least get to hold it for five minutes for being most improved, but that's okay. We'll let it go.
I will judge to see if I can allow you to have that for five minutes.
Dr. Vasquez, does that complete your report? All right, thank you. Mr. Pomerini?
Just as a reminder, members of the board, I need the deadline to appoint somebody to the Value Adjustment Board, both board member and alternate, and the citizen member and alternate is coming up. We usually do it by resolution at a subsequent board meeting, so I would really like to be able to have a resolution on both by March 11th. Yes, ma'am?
Let me clarify. So we have Value Adjustment Board.
Yes, ma'am.
And we need a board member and we need...
An alternate.
An alternate.
Yes.
Oh, and we need...
A citizen member.
But when you said citizen member, I'm back to thinking it's just a citizen. It has to be a citizen and member who is, owns a business.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. I was like, oh, I got, of course. You can jump in, yes.
I would like to nominate Stephanie Vannos.
We don't need a second, but I'll second it. Yes. Yeah. All right. All right. She will accept the nomination if there's a...
I'll second it.
Okay, we don't need a second.
All right, well, I, okay, just in case.
I already tried.
I am hyped about it.
All right.
I am currently on that board, so I'm happy to be the alternate.
Okay. All right, there you go.
So I volunteer.
All right. So does everybody agree with Member Vannos as the member and Member Salamanca as the alternate? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Member Ferrant, are you all right with this?
Yeah, so it's fine.
All right, thank you. All right, so we need, we just need a citizen.
A citizen and an alternate.
I gave him a citizen, but my citizen wasn't a business owner, so guys, it's...
I've been trying for years.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, we still, we still need that. Do we need an alternate for the citizen member?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, all right.
I have a question. Could we, could we kind of advertise? Could we put a post on social media that this, that we need a business owner?
Sure.
For this board and explain? That might be an option.
Sure. We absolutely could do that.
All right. Mary Johnson, former city council member and former county commissioner. One of the things she took on... One of the things she took on as her initiative was to recruit citizens to serve on advisory boards, and she really did a great job with that. She turned it into a whole event, and so just a food for thought for anybody who's like, gosh, I got nothing to do, I want to take on a new project. There it is for you. Okay, Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I received an email from a teacher at a high school, and they were talking about the recent work session we had, JCA, but they reached out to me regarding testing. And so when I looked at our website, because for some reason in my brain, I had that we had to list all testing, not just state testing, but even any district-mandated testing had to be on our website. That's, but maybe that law's changed, because when I went to look on our testing calendar, it was all Department of Education, and it didn't list any of our district tests. And this particular teacher's a history teacher, and they give 10 tests that they, their team crafts by the school team. They do, of course, the one EOC test that's done for history, for the statewide end-of-course exam. Then they have three districted PMAs that they're required to take. And one of the issues that I was hearing about these three districted PMAs is that they're supposed to be to inform instruction, to help with the students be where they need to be for the end-of-course exam so that they do well. But what it's turned into is a measurement tool that some schools are using to compare their school against other schools in kind of demean and berate the teachers. And now what we're seeing from that is teachers that are really teaching to the district PMAs versus like teaching the content, and all of that's being lost. I was hoping that A, we could have a conversation about that. B, more importantly, I was really hoping that the district could provide for the, all board members, all tests that are given to our students, because I know like 5th graders and 8th graders are tested at a much higher level than others in other grades. So I would love just for us to have a comprehensive list of all, of the state or the district required tests that we give to our kiddos. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Absolutely. We can get that into your inbox by tomorrow. Our, the team that presented for the strategic plan has that information, and we can send it to you.
Thank you. One of the things I would like to bring up, I regretfully wasn't able to attend the work session on BEDH, and there, I know that the board gave direction to Mr. Pomerini to come back with a version dealing with, oh, I'm fuzzy right this minute, dealing with the board's ability to respond during the public comment meeting, and putting it in policy that there wouldn't be any responses to public comments, but they might be made at the end of the meeting. So here's, I don't want to get into a debate on it, but here's something I do want the board to give some thought to. An example of experiences that I've had in the past is that, and of course, here, these meetings aren't televised, the public comment, but you can have a room full of people, something is said that's not factual. If it's district-related, the superintendent can respond, but if it's directed at the board as a whole, or any of us individually, and is grossly inaccurate, it's, you can have a whole audience here that walks away believing something that's not, that's not true. And the opportunity to respond and rebut happens at the end of the meeting when they're not here. That's a group of people, it may not be a huge group of people, but there's also times, and we've all experienced this, where somebody comes to a meeting with the intent of agitating, and they bring the media with them, and now you have a full-blown story that collectively or individually, we don't get to respond to. And silence is seen as admission. You have the media, you have these attacks, and we all just sit there like, you know, we're not going to speak, we're not going to reply. I, I think it's the wrong approach to have it locked into a policy that, in order to reply, one of you replies, and now as the chair, I have to call you out of order. So, Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was the one who brought it up, so I just...
I didn't get that. I mean, I know where it ended, but I don't have time to watch the whole thing.
That's okay. No worries. So my point of bringing that up was just to ensure, it wasn't that, as a chair, you can never comment back if you hear something that was erroneous. And I don't believe that moving forward, that that was going to be put in policy, because we already do have a policy that states we're going to end at 4:45, we're going to start our regular business meeting at 5:00. What I was, what I was concerned about, and I'm as guilty, I will admit it, I like to talk, and I, and you're very, very gracious when we, when we buzz in during pre-agenda, you want everybody to hear what we have to say, and I appreciate that. But sometimes that leads to us ending late, starting our board meetings late, and I was just trying to curtail that. I just, I want to make sure that we're starting our board meetings at 5:00, because we usually have a group of people waiting for us. So my intent on that really was just from 4:00 to 4:45, anything after that, we're going into our own time, knowing that we've got to start that meeting right at 5:00 PM, and just be respectful, and let's, myself included, shut my trap, and let's get our meeting started at 5:00. So that was my thought process.
Okay. And again, this is going to come back. So Mr. Pomerini, his team is drafting something. What I was hoping to get out of this conversation is at least direction to him to give us some options so that we're not locked into language, that we then have to come back and start the process over.
I'm afraid there not being any language.
Okay, yeah, because I think what we can do is, is have a practice and an understanding. And honestly, for the six years I've been on this board, it has rarely happened that anybody other than me responds, and, and I generally don't unless it's something that I know the whole board, I know how everybody feels, and it's kind of safe to assure people. This last meeting was very unusual, and it was with students, and it was very emotional, and each one of you wanted to respond, which I totally understand. And one of the problems is if Member Gallo responds...
Then let everybody.
Then, you know, Member Vianos is sitting there, well, if I don't respond, they're going to think, I don't care. And so each one of us, understandably, right? Well, because if you don't, so if nobody speaks, and it's just, as it's usually been, me saying on behalf of the board, then I let you all off. But as soon as somebody else does, especially on something like that, where it's just gut-wrenching for these kids, that I totally get that. But that's very unusual. So anyway, that was the one thing I wanted, I just picture the media, one of you guys has been accused of something, and you're just sitting there like, oh, well.
No, and I agree with that. I mean, we can sing and dance till 4:45 if we want to, if we have time. I just, again, my only impetus for doing that was just ending, just really, I don't care if we go up to 4:58, just as long as we're starting our business meetings at 5:00.
So the other two things I'll say on that, and then, and then we'll adjourn the meeting. But one, you all, we're all here, almost all of you were here at 4:00, and that was wonderful, and, but unusual. But if everybody gets here at 4:00, if everybody gets here at 4:00, and we either take no break and go straight in, or we did like today, where we had 15 minutes, or 10 minutes, or whatever, and then we're all back here. So today, I was like, I'm starting this meeting at 5:00. If I'm the last person, I'm the only person sitting here, I am starting this meeting at 5:00. I watched that meeting, we're starting at 5:00. But, but the other thing I kept track of today, because I was telling Mr. Pomerini that when, when we decide, we have 16 people, give them two minutes apiece, is I know it takes time in between that. So, and I told him, let's assume it's 30 seconds, and let's add that in, so that we kind of had a framework. And so I'll go back, but I literally tracked, you know, the minutes, the seconds between, and it is, it's a pretty significant amount of time from the time somebody walks away. And if I'm having to say, your time is up, your time is up, that adds a few more, and then the next person gets up there. So, so what you will see as we adhere to that is that then I might be cutting people shorter than you think in the amount of time in order to bring us in by that deadline, okay? All right. But I appreciated the discussion, and hopefully we'll get back on track. Thank you all. All right, anything further, Member Vianos? And then Member Felder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to follow up on some of the public comments we had today, because I was following the new policy and didn't want to bring it up at the time. The first one was, and this may be a question for you, Mr. Pomerini, sorry. Someone, one of the people who spoke during public comment brought up the question of having a student sit as representative on the school board. And I remember when this conversation last happened, and then I'm just, again, I was in a different role, so I just don't know whatever happened with that conversation. Is it possible that we can make this happen?
So, may I, Madam Chair?
Absolutely, you're recognized.
So, yes, it can happen. Usually, it would have to be done by some sort of policy, so we'd have to bring that forward. What I've seen around the state is that folks have, boards have, have a student member for the purpose of maybe giving a student report on something, or sitting there and maybe reacting in certain instances when it's, you know, the issue centered on a student. Things like student disciplinary cases, employee disciplinary cases, they ask the, the student member to leave because they don't want them to deal with that. That's something that we can do, and if you all are asking for that to come back at a rule development, or at a work session to discuss, I'll be more than happy to work up some language if that's the board's direction.
Thank you. I personally would support it, and be curious if anyone else does, but you can put me on record as supporting to have a student on our, on our board.
Member Salamanca?
Yeah, I've said this before, but I would also be supportive in having that conversation.
Member Felder, I think yours is probably on something else. I'll just, okay. Oh, go ahead, go ahead. Member Felder, you're recognized.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, Member Vianos?
If she wants to, yeah, if she wants to comment, yeah.
Oh, you're not done, Paul, you're concerned.
Okay. Thank you. I will be quick. There was something brought up also during public comment about the driver's license being required to pick up a student, so I just wanted to double-check with you on that question.
I'm going to defer to the superintendent on that one, and...
I've actually asked staff, my understanding is that it is a driver's license or an official ID that is required, but we can certainly put out information to schools reminding them that it is either or.
Perfect, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. The third thing was the, there was a comment about the, the district literary council, the committee meetings on the books. And I understand, my guess is that the meeting is sort of in the meetings notice on the website. Would it be possible to put it on the dashboard where sort of all of the objections are, are contained, or is that not possible?
All of our public meetings are noticed to that particular, the area, we can, I'm looking to Dr. Brown Cannon, but I'm sure we can add a statement under the comments where we have listed the board, the books that are under review, that, the date of the meeting. So we'll look at that to see if that's a possibility to put something there, or even a, maybe a link that, that takes them to that.
Okay, I think that'd be really helpful, just to keep it all in one place. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up was a, someone had submitted this comment, but they weren't actually here. Maybe this is just my district. I have been getting a lot of emails and conversations with parents about scooters and bikes on streets and on sidewalks, and walkers not feeling safe. And I'm just wondering, and I, I can see it, so I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do to enforce some safety rules, or if we have any authority to enforce any of this, or really what we can do, if anything, as a school district.
I'll give the non-legal response, and then our attorney will. So we currently do have things in place around safety. We also have, is it Safer Walk Week, where we also highlight safety if you're walking to school or doing scooters or bicycle. But we do not have the authority to police the sidewalks and the streets, as I think we've mentioned. We, we're not even allowed, if there isn't a crossing guard, to have an employee act as a substitute. But I will defer to general counsel.
What she said.
Well, that's not the answer I wanted. Okay. I, I just, I just want to raise this. I don't know if we can work with our local law enforcement, or I worry, and I know exactly what road they're talking about, the two roads that are in my district, I worry about people backing out of driveways, not seeing kids. They are zooming down sidewalks, they're zooming down streets, and it's just really dangerous. And if there's, you know, if there's anything we can do, if we could just make that a priority. Thank you.
I'm trying to think of the organization. There's actually an organization around public awareness around safe walk, something or another. They would be excellent, because the dynamic is just totally different with the bikes, and the risk is so much higher, and they go so fast. And like you said, it's not just running over pedestrians, it's people backing out of their driveway, and they don't expect something that fast. So we, we need to maybe reach out to them. I'll just have to remember who they are. And I'm going to go to Member, I just cheated. Let me go to Member Felder, and I'll come back to you. Member Felder?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
I was going to say quickly, we, when we were at East River, we met a gentleman that was over the teen safety, drive teen safety, I think it was, the seatbelt maybe, but it's a club. So I'm wondering if maybe Mr. Martinez, there he is, hello. Maybe we can just put the feelers out and see what clubs are out there, and maybe we could task the clubs to, to help educate students.
So we're still on this subject. Member Salamanca?
Yeah, I was actually, I talked to the superintendent about this, because like known on my neighborhood, we're seeing this a lot, scooters in particular, it is so dangerous, it is getting completely out of control, that I was going to have a meeting with commissioners to get us, like, how can we get a line? And then there are two or three organizations that are about student safety. Always Wear Your Sebo, it started in Boone, which is now also just in the east. We have a couple of folks that are like safe, so I wanted to potentially do actually a community meeting with my commissioner and some of these organizations about safety, and have the parents talk about this, and the commissioner see how much of an issue it is, because it really is, and we are very limited in our power.
Well, that's excellent. And that might give, just your initiative, if you can report back, I think that will give us some ideas of how we can do this at district.
Stay tuned.
Huh? Stay tuned. We will stay tuned. Okay, Member?
Madam Chair, may I respond to, and Board Member Vianos, we do have the team that is going out to the location that you identified, around Primrose area, close to the 408, and I think Buck Minister was the other one. So Mr. Pacheco and his team are going out, they'll do a safety evaluation, and then report back.
And actually, what I, that was a different, that was a different issue. What I was actually referring to is Corinne and Winter Park Road. I'm getting a lot of complaints.
They have both, they have both.
Okay, now, Member Felder.
Well, I did want to say something to what you brought up first, Chairperson, about sometimes we do have open mic, and sometimes the situations are so dire. And I know, you know, we do seem to take up time, but I think we probably are intelligent enough to kind of know when we need to land the plane, so that we can move on and really start board meeting at the time that Member Gallo is saying that we should start at 5:00. Because some things come up, we have to address immediately, because as Chairperson said, there are lies sometimes, and we need to correct it. And it, see, the room is not that crowded now, you know, so we need to address it sometimes at that point. But now, can I talk about my wonderfulness?
Yes.
Talk about your wonderfulness.
Well, Jones High School, I think Victor has some pictures. They sent, Jared Dimon sent 71. I said, please don't show 71 pictures. But anyway... sent 71, I said, please don't show 71 pictures, but anyway, we celebrated 130 years being in existence. Thank you! Yes, Saturday. So listen, we are the only predominantly black school in the state of Florida that has 130 years, and one of two in the whole country that has been in existence that long. And I, I just want to say that I grew up in this district, and of course, I graduated from Jones, but I just appreciate the district in terms of how things have changed. The way we look right now, baby, when I was coming up, this would not have been a woman, a superintendent, all women board, no ma'am, no ma'am, no ma'am, it would not have occurred. And so I just, I remember when we were graduating, my senior in 1974, before most of you up here were even thought of, I remember my classmates, we had 289 students in the class, and they said, God, we the smallest class, we're that many people. I said, you know what, y'all, there's going to come a time that children are going to come to Jones High. Don't worry, we, we will, we will exist. Here, here it is. I celebrated 50 years coming out of my, my high school reunion. This, this last year was 50 years, and now the school has been standing 130 years. That's the grace of God. That, that is just the, the fight, and I, and I'll say this, my senior year, they tried to close the school in 69, but in 1973, 74, which was when I was a senior, I remember walking out of Jones High School, and Wilbert Scarry was the principal, and we walked to Tampa Avenue where the school board was housed, of course, it's huge now. We were housed right next to Rock Lake, and I remember walking in there and telling the, the people in charge that we were refused to go back to school, because you're not going to shut down Jones. Happened again in the 80s, but here now is 2025, and the school is yet standing, we have IB program out there, nursing program is flourishing, is doing so much now, and I, I'm just so excited. I wanted to share that with the district, that 100, 130 years, y'all, that is something else. So thank you for allowing me to share this, and I, I'm going to love Jones High, it is in District 5, where the talent resides. So I'm excited, and thank you for allowing me, and you see Jared Demings, who's a Jones High graduate, and myself, Jones High graduate, so thank you all so much for this time.
Is everybody there, Jones High graduate?
Well, no, it was a time all of the block elected officials at the time were Jones High graduates, we only have Jared Demings, myself, and Commissioner McCary Burns, the three of us are Jones High graduates, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And the superintendent wanted to come, but she was ill, very ill this weekend, she couldn't make it. So I'm just so glad that we had a good showing, and it was a wonderful time, guys, it was a wonderful time. Thank you.
Very good. All right, Member Douglas?
Just wanted to say congratulations to Jones High School, I'm glad that you're still in existence, truly. I just wanted to come back to the safety of our children and the schools, talking about those e-bikes, okay, they are very dangerous, because after, you know, when you don't pedal it and they reach at 20 miles an hour, you cannot have control of those things, so the kids are going really fast, and they have trouble stopping. So what can we do to, I mean, can we send a message to the parents and let them know of the dangers of the scooters, so they're aware, because, you know, we're bicing to our, for our kids, we're not aware of what's going on until somebody tells us, you know, the facts about what this instrument is about. Thank you so much.
Dr. Vazquez?
I think we can put our heads together and come up with some ways that we can share some of those concerns. Scott Howitt may even be thinking of like a Mondays with Maria episode to highlight safety, and maybe we have someone from our, our safety department that is on as a guest, so we'll certainly put our heads together.
Member Salamanca?
Maybe, you know, so District 2, where the dreams come true, has been doing great, thank you. One, winners for the Spirit Run, I mean, we just had the most number, right, Eagle Creek Elementary, just killing it, amazing how many people were out there. Number two, Lake Nona High School was the state champs in boys soccer against the one and only Timber Creek High School, District 1. I went to Timber Creek, so I really hope, I really want to beat District 1 with not Timber Creek from time to time, but it is what it is. We were the champs for the state, so I'm excited for them to come, you know, District 2 is not the strongest with sports, because unlike Vicki's 100-plus years, high schools were, were new out there, so we are still building our programs, but we did beat Timber Creek, and Gallo, sorry about that. Yeah, that's it, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much, Chair, for indulging me.
All right. That concludes our comments for tonight. One thing, on the issue of a student representative, I think I would like to hear from the superintendent, not right this minute, please, I mean, I don't mean please, but I mean, I wouldn't expect you to, but if you could give some thought to what you think that might look like, because I just have so many, it sounds like a great idea, but I just have so many questions in my mind about it, like always the devil's advocate. So, yeah, I would look forward to, after you've had some time to contemplate.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's a great concept, I think we can accomplish it in a couple of different ways. I do know that I have spoken with some superintendents that have a member, some voting, some non-voting, and there are some things that you need to consider, but I do believe there's a way for us to have that representation that doesn't necessarily have a voting member on, on the board, so I'll come back next week, next board meeting.
Yeah, I think I would, I would have serious concerns about voting, because you have to be elected, in my opinion, to have a vote, so, but a voice and a vote are different things, and I actually have to remember how to get ahold of him, but a student representative in, I think it was Miami-Dade County, had come up and we met, and so he would be a great person to talk to as well, because he had a positive experience, and really interesting young man, he's going to UCF right now, so I should be able to track him down. Member Douglas, I think? Did you have anything else? All right. Meeting is now adjourned.